Now we're back to our Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Monday, October 18. We've already done call, roll call introductions. I don't see anyone here to even start into that. So let's start right with legislative. Also, we will get you binders. I apologize. I've, I know it's frustrating. We should have got binders for council. It is a hassle to flip through, so I apologize. We'll see what we can do on that.
We'll take care of that.
You could get Michael to get binders and punch holes for the next one. That'd be great.
Yes.
And if you could tell us page numbers, that'd be awesome.
Okay, page 38 is where we are. And so what this covers is council administrative expenses, salaries, benefits, supplies and services. Under services are some allocated IT expenses and common things like that that you may use. If you have a computer, cellphone, whatever, things like that, and there's allocations from the city's main hub. Also under there would be special consultant services or if council chose to attend, let's say, an AWC conference or go to DC to lobby, we would put those in there. And so this is pretty vanilla. If anyone on council has any significant plans, they probably should get with the mayor and Tony and make sure we throw these in here.
Tom, did you have a question?
Seventy-three thousand is the total?
I'm on a page with a graph.
It's a graph? Okay. And it's pretty simple. Just the only real issue here for council would be if there's something out of the ordinary that someone wanted to do and we wanted to have it in the budget. No questions?
I'm gonna make this so really easy. So we were thinking of, you know, we were thinking of letting the people do their presentation and then ask questions. Now, obviously, if they ask questions, which he just did, go ahead. I'm not gonna, I don't feel I need to call on you. It's a study session, so go ahead and ask your questions without feeling like you have to. But unless he asks questions, we're trying to let the departments go through their whole spiel because they might answer those. Well, it's informal. Go ahead.
And for legislative, there's really not that much. I mean, it's, it's pretty bare bones. The non-departmental, which we do next, will be more of a discussion than just the legislative part. That's pretty bare bones.
Well, I'm just wondering, when would be the appropriate time to have the discussion about changing the threshold for utility rate payments for senior citizens and disabled?
That would be part of the rate study that they're undergoing right now with.
Well, no, I mean, I would wanna make sure that this gets into the budget and so that can be part of the rate study. Because if we do change the threshold, I'm assuming that will change the amount of money that the utilities receive.
That's correct. That would be tomorrow during the utilities discussions.
Okay.
And, and on things like that, I'd like those things to be brought up after the person's completely done because that's kind of council's wishes, or let's say, let's say that's your wish. That's your wish, but it's not in there. Most of this is for them to present their budget.
Oh, okay, so we're not.
We're not debating, we're not throwing things in, except for fish, which is unusual. We're not saying, oh, I wanna do this. I wanna change that.
That's gonna be the.
Yeah, I mean, more than, more than likely, that's gonna be our council study, our council sessions. If we had time at the end of these two days, we'll do it, but which I'd prefer. But otherwise, it's not for us to say, well, I want this, I want that. It's to listen to the departments, do their amount. And if you have a question today, I don't think that's right. That's when you go over that.
Okay, all right, that's great.
If that makes sense.
No, that makes complete sense and I.
No, it's, it's hard to figure it out.
Well, I didn't know when he was asking about, you know, I just.
Yeah, like if you say, I want us all to be able to go to DC, that would be something at the end or in the next, later time. I wanted to go on, I wanted to do it before I left, but oh, well.
Mayor, let me just make sure I'm clear. If there's something that is not in the budget that we want in the budget or we want removed, we're not talking about that. We're gonna do that at the council meeting.
Yeah, yeah, because really, if you remember, most of the last four years, we didn't do that at these. This is to listen to the departments with their budget. These, these are basically their budget with my, with Tony and my blessing. If you think, if you see things like a pickup truck that you don't want, that's the time to talk to the staff about it. So.
This is the time to talk about.
But Mayor, I think I understood Robin, I mean, Councilwoman Benson, that if there's something that was denied and we wanna talk about it, we should talk about it at the council meeting?
No, here.
Yeah, because I would prefer the council meetings are.
Yeah, no, it would be.
You know?
Yeah. Wouldn't you agree would be now on those?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just meant, you know, that's why these are so short. It's on things that they put in the budget or maybe could have been in the budget, but it's not new ideas. Does that make, I think we're on the same page.
I think, I think I remember that last year we had a study session where it was just for council to talk about things that were not in the budget, that we wanted to be in the budget, and I don't, we're not doing that this year.
I don't remember that.
And we prioritized it.
We can do one of those after these two days.
Helpful, just because otherwise the council meeting is gonna be real long.
Okay, yeah, we'll schedule one of those, but it would be after these two days. But that sounds good. I would prefer that, too. Okay, so does it, so I guess there's a nod that, so we don't have all these council discussions at a council meeting. We schedule another study session to go over that? Okay, good.
So, so then today we are strictly listening to the presentations by staff and questioning anything that they are presenting.
Yes, and clarifying. And if there's things that, that the city administrator myself thought that maybe should wait another year, that, that you were given information, we can discuss that now and then carry on at the, you know, at the next council meeting.
That sounds just opposite of what we just said. If there's things that you wanted to wait for next year, that's something that was in the budget that didn't get approved by administration and the mayor. That's what we wanna do at a work session, right?
Well, you could get clarifying questions now with, with the department because they may not be at that study session together.
So just pull something out of the air, somebody wants a new truck and it was denied. This is when we ask them?
You could ask them and then when we get in that study session that we talked about, then you'd, you'd say what you exactly.
We can gather information today.
Yes, and that way they don't have to be at that other meeting down the road, but you, because you got clarity from that.
Okay, that's exactly where I was gonna go. Thank you.
In half the words.
Pardon me?
In half the words, probably.
Maybe. Okay, moving on.
Okay, non-departmental. The non-departmental is part of the general fund and this is kind of a catch-all, which it doesn't specifically go to any of the other departments. Some of the significant items in non-departmental.
And that's on, backwards on page thirty-four.
Page thirty-four. Yes. I apologize, just kinda running forward here. Okay, so legislative, county auditor, that's election costs. Then we have state auditor, sixty-five thousand estimate and insurance, about four-twenty. Employee benefits, that's what we pay for our former left one retirees. We have three who are still currently getting funded through there. Item four, the Harbor History Museum, general admission, thirty thousand. This is a program we've had, I believe, for four years now, maybe five years. And then collaborative funding for the Maritime Museum. We have thirty, or ninety-three thousand here. Part of that is a thirty-three thousand dollar in-kind contribution. If you look at Street Objective Number Four and the Street Capital, that would be to fix the driveway entrance.
And just to clarify that, that's, as we said, the thirty-three thousand for the driveway. Sixty thousand, you know, the museum had asked for one-fifty and I put sixty in the budget. I'm very flexible. Councilmember Woo had wanted the whole one-fifty in it. So that's something that we, and I'm flexible. That's something we would talk.
During this other meeting.
Yes.
Got it.
Got it.
Thank you.
Just if this meeting is informational and the next one is decision-making.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have the Fish Food Bank. We have two hundred there. And I understand we wanna talk about that, but let me finish this fund and then we can, we can bump back into that. And so then we have senior citizens programming for ten thousand. And then the operating transfers for a lot of the stuff that you're probably gonna see tomorrow. All on the next page, page thirty-five. So about four million seven hundred to street operating, four hundred to street capital, one million to park, three twenty-five for the LTGO, a million to strategic reserve and fifty grand to the equipment reserve. And you'll see those as we go through the other funds. They're, they're, this is how they're being subsidized. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, let's get into it.
But just a word on the Fish, two hundred thousand. As you know, I'm an advocate of Fish, but we're gonna have that conversation about possibly using ARPA funds today. And if that happens, that we decide to do that in 2021, this two hundred thousand dollars here is not for the building fund. It's actually, as it says here, for operational and.
Yeah, so we're gonna talk about that like right now. So if you don't have any other questions on any of these other items.
No questions.
Yes.
So on item number seven, the senior citizens. Is that an umbrella number or is this ten thousand dollars specifically targeting some kind of program that we don't identify?
Ginny, you wanna explain that? Because you've done.
They usually give us a list of their programs that they use and they subscribe to programs for their senior citizens. So it's, it's, it's really a list of things and I assume that they've given you lists in the past.
It's reimbursement. We, then we actually, they turn in receipts.
Yeah.
And it's for classes and things that they do and they turn in receipts. And if they turn them in and get up to ten thousand, which they probably will this year, then we pay for it. Can you pull that closer so the microphone?
It's physical stuff, it's educational things that they're.
It's programming. So they, sometimes things come in on video and they rent these videos for the seniors to go to. Or sometimes they have speakers in, or sometimes they will actually do some kind of event that's programming for their seniors.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just, you know, I believe in Fish, too. And so back to Fish. I put the two hundred thousand in here and you were at that council meeting. Actually, it's the only last council meeting we had where I supported the food bank and I didn't really care if it went for operation or their new project. So that's why we put two hundred in there. And then since then, they had asked for four. And then, as we know, Councilmember Franata proposed, suggested five. And we did get good clarity from Pamela. I wanted, you know, we all wanna be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. We wanted a little bit more financials. And about four hours ago, she sent those, or maybe yesterday. But I thanked her and she actually is listening to this. I told her I don't think we need any more information from her. I'm supportive of whatever this council chooses. I, I would rather have it one time instead of in the 2022. And, and they need this badly. So this was, that's why, that's why this is here is it's actually, to talk about now, it's actually on our agenda. It was actually thirty minutes was for, for this because it's a big project. And that might be to fund them in this present year with the ARP and then not in next year. But to give them what, what you all feel is fair and I'm happy with that because I support it.
And the way you just explained it, that would take not in 2022, so that would take this two hundred thousand out of the general fund and.
And it would all come from ARP instead.
And it all come from ARP, so that would put two hundred thousand back into the general fund.
Correct.
You know, they gave us a lot of good reasonings, I think, for, for the five hundred thousand and for it happening this year. I'm really glad that they sent in that documentation. I'm glad that you asked for it because just to hand a half million dollars out the door without anything, I don't think is good responsibility. But I, I'm certainly satisfied that what they gave is what you asked for.
Yeah.
And, and so I'm certainly supportive of, of that and in 2021 from the ARP funds.
Correct. So this would come out and yeah, and so now both of you, Dave and Tony, you figured out that it is, it is all legal and everything to take it from ARP.
In my opinion, it's, it's legal.
I agree with him as well.
Okay.
And the balance is there.
Yes, it's there.
Okay, and do you wanna see, you were the one that brought that up at the last meeting. Do you wanna speak to this?
Well, I, I think that you summarized it. I think in the other council member summarized it. I would like to do it, amend the 2021 budget, take the money out of the ARP funds, put this two hundred thousand that's showing here back into the general fund and get it all done, five hundred thousand in one year, we're done with it. And it's coming out of the ARP.
Right, I've looked this way. What are you two?
Fully supportive.
Yeah, okay, now, um, so, okay, so, so what it would take is we would have to put together an amending ordinance that would amend the budget. And generally, budget amendments require a supermajority when you are amending your current budget with your current revenues. But this is new revenue that you had not budgeted before. Therefore, it only requires a regular majority. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dave.
That sounds good to me. I didn't see any, and to add to that, I didn't see any public hearing requirements to do this either. It would be just two readings and we would be doing a budget amendment anyway for the 2021 budget if council chose not to do this.
We can do as many budget amendments on the budget as we want. So I would say we get this one done as a standalone sooner than later. I don't know if we can get it ready for Monday of next week, but we'll try. And that way you could do it at two readings or we could put it on November eighth. And since it looks like we have unanimous support, ask you to adopt it on first reading so we can get that done and get the money over to the food bank.
I think we do two readings so we can get Jim's vote.
I appreciate that. Another, I, I wanna make sure that we're not setting some sort of crazy president by these budget amendments. So I wanna, I'll have a little discussion with you. I mean, since you're saying this is new money, you know, but I just wanna make sure that we're not setting some president where we're amending budgets without a supermajority unless you have convinced me of clear clarity on that.
I will find the RCW, but as far as I can see up there, it looks like you'll have your supermajority anyway.
Well, that's what I thought, but I just, I mean, for the record, I just wanna say that I'm not in favor of circumventing a supermajority when it comes time to.
Absolutely, I couldn't agree with you more.
For the record, we, we have seen Jim vote on something on first reading.
Really?
He made an exception this last year, I think.
Oh, maybe.
One time.
You might consider it again.
He may consider it.
What item was that? Councilmember wrote?
I'd have to look into the vote thing, but I'm almost positive there was one. You made a big thing about it being, on this one instance, I will make my exception.
Okay, well, maybe I'll have two.
I don't remember the item, but I remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. It was forced into on government.
I'm sure it had to have been an absolute emergency.
For the record.
Okay, so, so that's great. So Dave, we're gonna take the two, you go ahead and take the number six out of here. And then we'll try, council will try to get that for Monday and we'll work hard towards that. The other thing, Dave and Tony, is we need to, that we were gonna spend that ARP money on the sewer. So we do need to figure out how we're gonna pay for that in, in, is it this present year?
The sewer project was gonna be for later in 2223, I believe.
Okay.
It was for the second tranche.
And we're gonna get a second, second one point five million next year.
Well, I, I think the mayor is talking about, when do we, are we making payment for the bypass to the contractor? I'm assuming.
I don't know that we ever dropped our other funding for that project and replaced it with ARP. I think we were gonna do that, that anyway. And it was, I don't know the timing of when the project was gonna be done, but I know the timing of that project was planned for the second issuance of ARPA money.
Right.
So that would be later next year.
It's just good to make sure because I thought the ARP was paying for that bypass. So let's just get clarity on that.
I, I thought it was too and I support that.
Yeah, so we'll get clarity on that.
We'll, we'll get clarity on that.
Okay, and then can someone let Stacy know that we're.
I just did.
Okay, and that's, any other questions on the, on the non-departmental?
Well, not, not, not at this time as you identified the process, the way it's going.
Right.
And I would just like to point out that we just did, for a change, one hour and twenty minutes.
Oh, we did this thirty minutes in like five.
Yeah.
We did good. We got something back. So, great, and I think that's great. So we're gonna do the five. And then court will come in, so that's gonna be on page, just so we're all there.
Court starts on page, page thirty-nine.
Thank you. Councilmember French is excusing himself for a few minutes, but we will go on. Wait, Jim, just one second, Jim.
Gotta go.
Do you wanna hear just one second, that quick question you asked me the other night? He wanted, he wanted to know, just jumping in because he's leaving for a second, and he had a question on court, why we were changing it to specialists. And I just said, because, you know, be honest, our court staff, people work a lot harder than the title gets them the money for and they deserve more. And if we change the, the title to specialist, it's more in tune with what they're really worth. And do you want to just speak for a moment to, to us about that?
Sure, yeah. I, I'm soft spoken, so let me know if you can't hear.
It may not be on. You may have to push that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that is correct. We, I think, calling our clerks clerks sort of leads to a misunderstanding about what they really do and a lot of what they do is not clerical. And so I'm just asking that their positions be reclassified to a different job title. And I've done some research and a lot of the municipal courts are moving in this direction. The polling that I did shows that there are several courts that have gone away from court clerk and instead use the job title judicial specialist, legal assistant, you know, things like this instead. And that that is a better reflection of the work that they actually do. So that's kind of what's behind all that.
Do you have a question? Since you have to go for a second, I was wanting you to be able to not get this information later. Do you have any question on that?
It talks about, it talks about creating a new job classification of judicial specialists and reclassify the existing two point six FTE clerk clerk positions and the one point one FTE lead court clerk. So are, am I reading that? That you all, the, the full two point or three point six FTEs will be ruled into the judicial specialist? Or is that not correct?
I, I think my intent there was to eliminate the lead court clerk position. It, it's been vacant for almost ten years. Yeah, or also reclassify it. It's a long, it's a very long story. But the end result should equal two point six court staff, not three point six. But somehow we have to address the vacant lead court clerk position. Whether we reclassify it or just eliminate it, I'm not sure the best solution, but that's the intent.
Okay, so where on the salary range is it listing this judicial specialist?
On, you're, you're referring to attachment A, the sal, that salary range?
Well, no, it's, it's towards the front. It's on page six of the budget.
Yeah, that, the judicial specialist is not on that list. It, what you see there is going to be the court clerk. It's near the very bottom.
Well, I'd be curious to see what the salary range is for this proposed reclassification.
Yeah, I'm proposing that the salary range be adjusted to be that of the lead court clerk position, which is not on attachment A. And I think I'd have to rely on Dave Rodenbach to help me with those numbers.
Okay, well, that, then, before the work study session, apparently, that we were going to have when we're discussing things other than just this informational process we're going through today. If I could have that answer, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
And generally, it's the HR director and HR department that works with department directors with the proper salary range for all their employees. So that'll be something that Camille Borders will be working on as well.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, he was gonna step out for a few minutes, so I just wanted to let his clarifying questions go.
Sure. And, but you'd like me to keep going?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I don't think you need me to review our function, which is the first two pages of the court budget. But instead I'll skip to the narrative of goals, the five-year goals.
Which page?
Forty-one.
The, the court has four goals for the next five years, but two of them are quite big. I, number three is implementing a new case management system. We hoped that, that we are selected as a pilot court for that project. It's a statewide project. It's huge. We are about to go live with it in July and then they ran into a blip, so it's being put off until 2022. So we're, that, that is what we're going to continue with. It will, it will essentially make us paperless, which is really, really, we're excited about that. The fourth one is a youth court program and I'm just calling it that now, but really it's an idea that's not new. There are several courts that already have this. But my vision was, was, is to somehow bring court to the high schools that we have here in the harbor. And it would be a voluntary program and, and of course, the schools would have to be on board with all this and it would be all volunteer. And there's a couple of ways you can do that. And we could iron out those details as we get, you know, when we get to it. But essentially, it would be conducting court in the school auditorium with students acting as the court players, obviously being supervised. And the defendants, I guess, are actual students who got either civil infrac, well, they'd have to be civil infraction tickets. And so it's an opt-in basis.
Are there other cities that are doing this program, the youth court?
She had told me about this two years ago and then I never forgot what she had said. So I asked her to put it back in her narrative. And what she had done is she had found out that other cities sometimes have a court in the school system and other students watch it and they, and these are live. This is a real case. And the other students realize what they could get in trouble with. It's almost like the, the fake crash scene that the school does at the end of the year and how they learn.
Yeah.
And they realized, they found out that a lot of the kids learned from this and decided not to go down this path. And some of the schools have even done curriculum around it. And I was so impressed with Stacy's wanting to do this like a year ago that I said, you know, even if you don't get to it this year, put it in there so you never forget about it. And so that's, and so she did. And it was exciting to hear. And we actually talked to our, our new judge that we're working on a contract and that judge was very supportive of it.
Stacy, I imagine that would free up some of the other court time then. You wouldn't have the young people coming in. You know, okay, so, but at the same time, you'd have to kind of manage, somebody would have to kind of manage the school syst, the school process, right? So overall, is it going to increase the workload at all or is it gonna reduce it?
I, I think it'll be a wash. I mean, it really won't change anything that, or resources that we're already expending. It's just gonna change where we conduct court.
Thank you.
So I don't foresee any costs or resources being overly.
Well, but you're, you're, you're need to have the prosecutors and the defense attorneys showing up at these locations, the way I'm reading this.
No, those are the students acting as those roles.
So, a, a, and don't get me wrong. I mean, I, I, I'm not opposed to this idea. I, I, I'm willing to learn more about it, but so, a, a teen, and I'm assuming this would be under 18?
High school, yes. Possible, yeah.
So, uh, seventeen-year-old gets a citation, uh, for speeding. Then they would have the opportunity to, if this program is enacted, they would have the opportunity to either choose to go to court or go to this court?
Yes.
Okay, and then who is the, I mean, when they come to this court, the judge has the teeth behind the, the, the facts of the case and the ruling that comes out. Who, who gives these people the authority, this, these volunteers, so to speak, the authority to make these kind of decisions?
Well, this would be an opt-in thing. So there would be disclaimers and opt-in forms that you would, of course, have to sign, understanding that you're allowing students to make decisions about your case. But this would be all under supervision of the municipal judge. So, you know, he or she, whatever, they're not going to let things go outside of the law. And this is really, I think, when you were talking about high school kids, this is a lot like a deferral program. So the, the penalty would be things like community service or writing a paper or whatever the, the student judge decides from a list of approved sanctions. These, this is not, oh, I'm sending you to jail or I'm imposing a, you know, hundred-dollar fine. These would be non-monetary penalties.
Oh, they, they would be non-monetary?
Yes.
Well,
It's, it's a program that's been very laid out by big courts like Seattle Municipal Court and Spokane. So the details are very, very well ironed out.
Okay, well, I'll be interested in learning more. But so if somebody's a teenager, is there a certain list of infractions that can only go here? Because if you have a sixteen or a seventeen-year-old that's going 120 miles down Harborview, that's a little bit different than going seven over.
Absolutely.
So is there some sort of criteria list on which, which type of cases can go to this type of
Yes.
procedure?
Yes.
Okay, well, then, and the mayor said that he would talk to me further about this, so I won't take up any more time and.
Well, talk to her. She knows way more than I even knew.
So I just want to piggyback on, uh, council member Francis's question. So, uh, they'd be judged by their peers.
Right.
And so their peers could be like, huh, you know, I know how it is. Yeah, you gotta sometimes speed a little bit to get to school. Um, so you're good. I mean, that, that could be an outcome.
Well, again, this would be under supervision of the municipal judge, so I don't think that that kind of thing would be allowed. But, um, I, you know, I can provide much more detail about the exact program.
Yeah, so to, to, just to follow up with that thought. So if this is monitored by the judge and something happened as council member Abasal just described, would the judge have the ability to overrule this?
Yes. And second of all, the judge is gonna set the parameters of which cases are eligible for the program. If there's somebody driving recklessly or, you know, some egregious case, they're not, that won't be eligible for the program.
Okay, a, a, and I guess rather than belabor this whole discussion, the, i- in order for this to move forward, other than this informal discussion that we're having about it, it would come back before the council for some sort of action?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
That would have been a good first question.
So have you, have you spoken with the schools? Because you mentioned that this would be taking place in the gym. I work at, uh, you know, Peninsula High School. And gym spaces, there, there's not a lot of it, and there's not a lot of time, especially with COVID because they're, uh, the custodians are having to put chairs up during lunch and take them down, then they have practices.
Yeah, I did, um, speak to some of the teachers back when I was doing Law Day. And we had discussed these sort of visions, and they were, they loved the idea, but you're right, that was before COVID. So things have changed since then. They would, I would have to go back and, you know, vet out all these details.
I mean, even without COVID, it was still, it was still a lot of, um, there just wasn't a lot of time in between things. So then would we be paying like their custodians?
No, this would be something they would provide. This is gonna be, um, at, at least initially when I discuss this with them, would be something that they would like to fold into their curriculum.
Idea.
So again, this is a vision. I, you know, the details are still.
Yeah, I mean, I, I kind of like the idea, but I, I just, I've had a lot of experience working with kids, especially in the volunteer kind of stuff. And I, myself, I feel like if you take the courts out of the court, kids are just gonna say, well, my mom said I couldn't go to this, or I had homework, I had a sports thing, I just didn't show up. They won't take it as seriously as they're expected to come to court. In, in my own opinion, I think it would be a much simpler and logistically less complicated just to set up a camera and allow them to watch, you know, as a class or something like that. Instead of having to send people over, back and forth, set up and break down.
Yeah.
Blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
But I like the concept. I just don't know about the logistics.
This wasn't all the time, too. It was just one, wasn't this just a ca, occasional times?
Yeah, just.
Yeah, this wasn't like the whole time they do this. This was just like, you know, two or three times a year.
Yeah, but then the lesson is just gonna get lost.
Okay, why don't we work on it when it comes back to council?
Okay.
Hey, so that, those are my, our five-year goals. And then moving on to the, um, 2022 objectives. Again, I have, uh, obviously for 2022, uh, converting over to an electronic case management system, like I mentioned before. And then we would also like to continue with our hybrid court system, which is, um, part in-person and part remote. We've been operating under remote, 100% remote during COVID. So, um, we, our goal for 2022 is to make, uh, more of a hybrid court so that we have not only in-person, but an option for people to appear remotely for certain things. And then, of course, the reclassification, I probably don't need to go over that again. But, um, I'm asking to, you know, reclassify the job title for court clerks. And then the fourth thing on our list is the judge's salary, and that's just on there. That's already been accomplished. So the fifth thing that's not on here and, uh, needs to be brought up is the court security, which, uh, I'm, I think, I'm assuming, as you know, uh, if the current court community service officer position is, um, converted over to the code enforcement position, then the court is losing our court security. So I really have done a little legwork in preparing for that. There's a few options that we have available. And one of them is to hire a private vendor or, um, have Gig Harbor police officers provide court security on a volunteer, extra duty, overtime type of, um, setup. And then, or, um, seek court security services from an outside law enforcement agency. And then last is to, um, create a new position where court security and the police evidence, position be made into one. Point two for the court, point six for police.
Yeah, so currently the code enforcement officer spends two days a week in code enforcement, two days a week in the evidence room, one day a week as the court security. Uh, with a full-time code enforcement officer, we assume that our current code enforcement officer wants that job and will go, we'll, we'll get it. The police chief has put in his budget an additional point two, so three days a week in the evidence room rather than two. And what we would do is, if we're lucky, find somebody with Adam's skill and his, um, certification, so he could also, or he or she could also do the court security, and we have point eight type position. So that's our, that's our strategy. We're hoping we can do that. But if not, as Stacy outlined, we have other options to, uh, to look at. But the one thing we'll make sure is we have security, proper security for the court when they're operating in person.
And I might add, which I need both, everyone's, all three of your clarification. So a go, the goal of this actually is to solve this soon. Because if, if, you know, talking to you and Tony and everyone, we need, we need this, you know, first thing, if we, if we contract it, we have to go to the union. And whatever we do, we need this figured out kind of almost before the budget. Because we, we have to plan this in our system so that come January 1st, we're not figuring it out then, or in December. We have to know this possibly before we pass the budget to get the wheels in motion. Am I correct, Tony?
So what I would like is, is if council is generally supportive of this concept, we could start the process now of figuring out who the court, I'm, I'm sorry, who the code enforcement officer will be. And then how we would do the evidence room and court security. And, and as the mayor said, hopefully by the end of the year, we would have that figured out and be able to implement that on, in the first, uh, few weeks of next year. If we don't, we can continue with the way we're doing things now until we get all the proper, um, recruitments done and get people in place to provide the services that we need.
Now, the one reason why I'm not supportive of doing the way we are now is because we have code enforcement, I think, twice a week. Okay, well, that, this person, that's because this person is doing court staff.
Right.
There, and, and that means if we all, most of us has said we want more court, more code security. That means we need for that person to start at code security, however many days, five days. We need to know that before, or that, or that will be delayed.
I mean, code enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and because, because this person right now does, does three, yeah, three days a quarter, yeah, so. So I, you know, I prefer contracting it out and keep our officers out on the street myself.
And those options, I would agree with that, that having a police officer even on, um, overtime, uh, off-duty is not the proper way to go.
Well, when will we be seeing the financial implications of this?
The, I think if you add it all up, we are talking about adding point six FTE for code enforcement and point two FTE. So almost at point eight FTEs worth of new employee to upgrade these services that we're talking about. I don't have the exact number to share with you. That's something we can talk to the finance director about.
Okay, well, that'd be good. I, I, I definitely need that information. And that would make a decision whether or not we need to contract it out. Because if we do a, uh, point eight or another FTE, then you got benefits, you know, there's, oh, there's added costs involved. So I'd really be curious to see what contracting it costs versus.
And, and contracting depends upon what type of service you want. Do you want armed or unarmed? And I would argue we went unarmed, um, court security services. And so that's gonna be more expensive.
Would there be any possibility of anybody that is in the police volunteer corps, uh, being able to do that job on a volunteer basis?
Again, we're looking at somebody who would have, who would be armed with a limited commission. And I don't believe any of our volunteers have the ability to carry weapons.
Volunteer for that.
But Tony, do you think that this would be, um, a good topic at the beginning of our council study session?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, maybe that we line up in the next couple of weeks?
Yes.
We could do that at the beginning of that study session of.
And, and mayor, what we can also do is we can also have a preliminary discussion with the union with regards to hiring, um, private security to provide, um, services to the court. We just need to know where they're at and what that issue will be.
That'd be really helpful to know where the union stands on this.
And the HR director's right behind me, and she'd be wanting to be helping with that.
Yeah.
Is there a way that during the court session, if someone is fined something, that they can be an additional, uh, fine that would help pay for court security?
Unfortunately, the legislature doesn't allow that.
Yeah, the, the way the defined structures work and the court costs and all those things are pretty much set up by the state, and we can't really,
Couldn't have an adder on there.
Go beyond those.
I think based on the bids that I got for courts, uh, armed court security services, I think, and based on what we, um, currently pay for court security now, I don't think we're very far off. I, I think, I, I think the cost won't be more than what we pay now. And if it is, it's, it'll be minimal.
Also, we're increasing our code enforcement, so the union, um, they're not losing anything because they're actually getting that person back full-time. Or, so it's a wash to them. But we'll still let that way, you know?
And as a matter of fact, it's point eight worth of new employee that will be, uh, a member of the union.
Okay.
That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Stacy. I'm happy to help. Thank you.
The next item that we have is administration, starting on page 45. And just like Stacy, um, I'm, I'm not going to go through the description of function. You pretty well know what, um, what it is that we do. I know that Camille has provided some additional information regarding her, uh, department and her request for additional, um, positions in the budget. And we will have Keith, after she speaks, come and talk about the IT requests. As far as the administrative, administration narrative of goals, we've split it up into the various sections that are in admin. And I do want to point out, uh, if you go and look on page 49, that we have added parks development under admin. As you know, the parks manager position now reports to the city administrator. Uh, the reason for that was, well, probably mostly twofold. One, Jeff is a very busy person and making sure that the parks manager was getting adequate direction and things were moving appropriately. And that all the other functions that Jeff is responsible for were getting the attention they needed. We thought it would be a good idea to have the parks person report, parks manager report to the city administrator. Second thing it does is it elevates it in its priority and its appearance, um, to the rest of the community by having that person now in the administration office reporting to the city administrator. There's a lot of things that the parks manager is gonna be working on over the next several years. And having that person reporting directly to the administrator, I think, just, you know, adds a little bit to the, I'm patting myself on the back here, the prestige of that position a bit. So that's why you now see it in administration. So are there any questions on the narrative of, of goals? Because I'd really like to, um, really drill down into the narrative of objectives.
I think I have an, an appropriate question. And on page 47, under narrative of goals. So that's what you're asking about right now. Number four, it talks about grant opportunities for the city. But I don't think I've seen anywhere in the budget where we have a pool of funds that are available to pay grant writers. And I'm concerned about that because opportunities come up with conservation futures, for example, RCO, other opportunities that if, I feel like we had some funds put aside, we'd be able to jump on, um, these opportunities to leverage other funds.
I can, just a couple of things on that. One is, we have put in the contract of our lobbyists that now they're responsible to do some of the grant writing themselves. So that's part of that. And we're, the people that we're looking at for parks have extensive grant writing skills. So they would, I think some of our grant writers would already be employed by the city.
Yeah, I would envision the parks manager as someone who could be a go-to person for grant writing, uh, obviously for parks, by giving advice to the other departments when it comes to the type of grants that they would be going for. But if council believes it's a good idea to put, and I'm just pulling a number out of the year, $20,000 into the budget to, as a contingency, that if we have to have a grant written really quick, and if it's, uh, a specialty-type, uh, grant that really requires some, uh, knowledge that maybe we don't have, it would be nice to have that money available. So that's something we can talk about when we're, uh, discussing the budget and what goes in and what goes out.
And then one last thing, um, we don't spend all of our park money typically every year because we have so many projects. So like the sports complex, we actually paid for a grant writer. And so we do actually pay for grant writers throughout the year. Council does okay at, usually at that time. Any other comments on the narrative of, of goals? So turning to page 50, where we start talking about the objectives for 2022.
So turning to page fifty, where we start talking about the objectives for 2022. Most of what you see there for administration are things that we have had in the budget in the past. I'm not going to wander through those too much. Any questions from council? We have to try to answer those. The next section after administration is the clerk's office and Josh can speak to that. If you have any comments you'd like to share, Josh, or if council asks questions, respond to questions.
Yeah, the clerk's goals should be pretty straightforward. These are just statutory requirements that the clerk's office does. They don't even carry a monetary amount. It's just our staff time. So yeah, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Josh, do you know approximately when the chambers audio video upgrades will be happening?
That is scheduled to happen, I believe, by the end of this month, but I haven't heard an update recently.
Okay, thanks.
One, one of the challenges that we've heard from the people who are providing the equipment is getting the equipment with the worldwide chip shortage. Everybody's having issues getting equipment. Keith will be here to talk about IT and you can ask him what's the latest he's heard from the vendor. But he mentioned that to me a couple of weeks ago when I was asking, when are we going to get this done? Just kind of shook his head and said, we're waiting to see if they can get the equipment in on time. And I was going to highlight item number seven there. So thank you, Josh. Camille, you want to talk about human resources?
Sure. Thank you. The narrative goals for 2022 are very similar to 2021 goals. We're just trying to keep track of where we're at. And similar to Josh, they don't require a lot of monetary situations because it's statutory requirements as well. The recruitment and workforce development is going to be a key moving forward. We do have twenty nine employees who are fifty five and older, who we will be potentially recruiting for in the next three to five years. We want to be able to prepare for that as well. Which is why we're requesting two additional staff members for the HR department. As well as I outlined some considerations for you in the handout. I've provided a handout to our clerk as well. I did reach out to several jurisdictions to find out kind of their HR structure and several jurisdictions have city attorneys and they also have assistant city attorneys. I don't do attorney work. But I do also write memorandums of understanding, do research and stuff like that, help prepare for negotiations. So not that I'm an attorney, but there are some aspects of their job that I am also performing similar to the administrative services director positions in some jurisdiction. Some of my duties also overlap with those positions as well. We've also seen an uptick in recruitment over the past two to three years. We're on the high end of recruitment, unlike some of the other cities that we've talked to, like Paul's boat, Port Orchard, Squim, Aberdeen and Bainbridge. They're not seeing the volume of recruitment that we're seeing. So far this year, we've had thirty four, this is year to date, thirty four open requisitions. Five of the positions have not been filled, but that's still requires work on our end to come up with those draft postings, meet with the department heads and possibly redo the recruitment. An average recruitment takes seventy hours approximately from start to finish. Um, that starts at meeting with the departments to go over the positions, possibly negotiating the salary range of the new position. Talking about meeting with the unions to go over the job descriptions and negotiating the salary, like I said. And then all the way until we hire the person and they onboard that day. So that takes about seventy hours per recruitment. And like I said, so, so far this year, we've had thirty four positions. If you times it by seventy, that's two thousand three hundred and eighty hours. That's over a one point oh full time equivalent employee. So right now it's just me working on recruitments along with everything else. Linda is doing payroll benefits solo right now because we recently lost our payroll benefits assistant. And we have Diane, who's a temporary person who is assisting with, you know, other office assistant type duties within the department right now.
What is Denise doing?
Pardon me?
Denise.
I'm not sure who you're referring to.
Didn't we get the?
I think you're referring to the new employee in finance.
Oh, council payable. Thank you.
We have two Denises, so that's why I asked. Are there any questions?
So I'd like to make an additional comment. The handout that Camille has provided you, she's gone over in, in summary detail. And in particular, if you turn to the second page through the fourth or fifth page, listing all the various activities, functions, responsibilities that this HR department has. It truly is a, an impressive laundry list of activities and things that need to be done in order to make sure that we have an adequate HR function in the city. Uh, without proper HR functioning, things like FMLA can get delayed. We miss deadlines and that goes true for a whole lot of other activities that when something comes in or something occurs that we need to react to right away. Uh, the request for two additional positions, I think, is is very much warranted based on my experience, uh, working with various HR departments and seeing what they're responsible for here versus what I've seen in other cities. So I would wholeheartedly recommend counsel. When we get to it in a week or so, talk about those two HR positions and put them both into the budget.
I have a question about the HR analyst. In the pay schedules, that analyst is listed under the executive area. It's HR. So they're an executive, not anything else. Why would that be a executive position?
It's a confidential position, not represented by the union. And they would be acting on behalf of the city in their capacity.
But aren't things like the non-represented, non-supervisory personnel, city clerk and human resource assistant, are those confidential as well?
They are confidential as well. They're not represented by union, but they also have supervisors that are acting on behalf of the city.
So the HR analyst would not have a supervisor?
No, they would, but they would be working in some capacities on behalf of the organization.
But it's just a paid step higher.
Right.
So it's necessary to have that, you feel?
What was that?
It's necessary to have that executive position, HR analyst?
I believe we need it. Yes.
Okay. Well, you did a good job of putting together the list of things you do. I think any of us here on council that have worked for more than one an operation, more than one or two people in the corporate world have had to do the same thing. I know I had to do it several times and I know I got very creative when I did it as well as most people. And I feel respectfully that you did the same thing here. You have a lot of line items, but some of the light items are just simply statements. If hiring, you know, you have on this, you have what you consider when you do that particular task. So this is not really a list of tasks, but it's a list of tasks and everything you have to take into consideration when you do those, not necessarily what is time consuming.
That was informational piece for you guys to better understand the role of HR at the city.
I think when we get around to it, when we've compared ourselves and our HR to other cities and everything, but what we haven't considered is, yes, that particular city may have three people doing the work that only we're asking you to do two or something like that, but we haven't talked about efficiency. And I think that you can't solve inefficiency if that's, if that's an issue by throwing more FTEs at it. So I think that just like we've done in the past, we've asked to have a, a study done on police operations and how many people we need in the police department, how they should be patrolling and everything. I think that before we authorize any more employees in HR, that we ought to do a consultant study on the tasks that are done and whether or not, how to staff that the best way. We do it for other, other departments. I think we should do it for HR. That's my comment.
Thank you.
And I would support money in the 2022 budget to pay for that.
And that is something that we can do a little more research on. We could, there are several HR type companies that we could talk to about doing that kind of work and how much it would cost. What I do feel is the department is at least one person short. And what I would support is providing that additional person right away. And then bringing in the consultant to take a look at the operations, give us recommendations for efficiencies, maybe moving some duties around and right sizing the department if it's needed. But just not providing any additional support right now and pending that investor, I'm sorry, impending that study, which will take three to six months depending on.
Yeah, I think that's, that's something that I could support. But the one person that we would go after is I'd like to see that position be the HR analyst. Uh, even though they may doing, be doing jobs that are lesser than their capabilities. I think the HR analysts could do the most if that's going to be something we approve and then look at whether we need to staff further.
We will take, we'll take a look at that and have information for you.
And I certainly meant no offense. I hope you don't take it that way.
Then taken.
Well, and I, and I will say that I agree with you when it comes to the list that she's put together here. Not everything is done every year. But the, it's just the breadth of things that you have to know how to handle. Uh, and the various laws that you have to understand is quite remarkable.
Well, that just says a lot about, a lot of good things about the person doing that. They have to have that knowledge. But we're talking about actual tasks and not the knowledge from which it takes to do those tasks.
I, I would just, and I appreciate your handout and it was very informative and it, it brought some, they put it this way, it got me to think about it a little bit more in depth by seeing all the things and you're describing that these other jurisdictions have other people are doing some of these things. So I appreciate that. But just for right now, and I believe this probably will be a discussion at the work study session. We'll, we'll spend a lot more time on this, but. So right now, well, two years ago, how many employees were there in your department?
Two years ago, we had payroll benefits administrator, myself and a temporary HR person, full time.
Okay. And then what did we have at the beginning of this year?
We had HR assistant, my position and Linda's position. And we also had a temporary HR assistant to help out with the COVID.
And Linda was the payroll?
Linda's payroll benefits.
Okay. And so as you're present, is what is being presented here preliminarily, what, what will be the full complement?
So we would have an additional HR assistant for all of the staff in HR and they also are helping out with other departments as well currently. And then the HR analyst position, which would primarily focus on recruitment, retention and training and development and those kinds of things that we just can't get to right now. I mean, my, my focus right now is on statutory requirements.
Well.
And I know that we need to get bodies in the seats, but I have to get that done before I can even go focus on recruitments right now.
Right. But, but in the end, it would be so the HR analyst, the HR assistant, the lady that's doing the payroll and yourself.
It'd be two people in payroll because we need a payroll backup, which is what we have currently, right? We just have a vacancy. So we had a person that was in the position and just recently quit. So the two people in the payroll section, and now we're looking at two people in the HR section that are new, which would include myself. So three total. I have all together.
We, we know that at one point, our finance director is going to retire and our payroll person is going to retire. And no one knows either of those very highly complicated jobs. And so we have to, before they leave, we have to have someone that before Dave says, I'm off to the beach, um, we have to have someone trained by Jade. Before payroll says, I'm, I'm there too. We have to have someone. We do not want to not know how those departments. So we're anticipating, just like what she just said for, for payroll. Those are two that, you know, we're not going to necessarily hire them right away, but we're going to try to find out from the two people that are here, what is your exit plan? So we can train someone before that happens. So.
And it's not only our department, right? We know, like I said, I started off with, there's twenty nine people who may be looking at the similar situation. And what are we doing to plan ahead for that? And they're going to ask for our support and we're going to have to be willing to provide it to them if we have the time available.
Well, so did you say that you'll have two payroll?
There's two, currently there is a payroll benefits administrator and an HR assistant who supports the payroll benefit administrator.
So, well, how many are in finance right now?
We have five people in finance, including myself.
And none of them do payroll?
No.
Several years ago, payroll was over in finance, was it not?
When payroll was in finance, we had redundancy. We had trained someone else that could do it. But when it left, we lost that.
So you, so then you had six or seven people before.
We had seven people. We gave up the utility billing, which was one person. And probably about point three FTE for finance. And we gave up the payroll person, which was about the same.
Point two, three?
No, it was a point one, it was a one, one point O position, but I wouldn't say payroll at that time was a one point O function. It was probably about point eight. And we use, we would use it for other, but it's gotten much busier.
Right. She also does AP too.
Oh yeah, she does AP associated with payroll.
Exactly. Yeah.
You know, like the, the retirement, the IRS payments, the benefits, the insurances, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Any further questions of HR?
Camille, what types of other employees that, that are either currently working here or not positions here yet would be able to take on some of the responsibilities of the HR department? Or are there any?
That's why we're requesting the HR analyst position.
Okay. Cause there is no other staff person currently working here that can take on those duties in that capacity.
Right now, honestly, I have Tony. He helped me out a lot.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, just an observation. Given the relatively small size of your department and the unknowns that we're talking about here, retirements, we don't know. But just one will put a tremendous burden on your activity. Same thing. I'm looking at the people who left last year, the thirty four positions that were filled. Okay. Was one FTE right there. Uh, and I don't know how you ever project retirements and quits going forward. So I, I think that the plan that you were outlining there, Tony called, let's stick our, let's definitely do this. But stick our toe in the water and see how it goes. And then we'll fill all the other position later. That's a, I think it's a sound position. I think it's a sound way to approach it. Cause this, you're, you're betting on the unknown here is what you're doing. Okay. Well, that's my assessment.
The other interesting thing to think about when it comes to our employees is we have some long time folks who are getting close to retirement age, as Camille has said several times now. But we also have a lot of mid-career people and starting their career people that quite frankly, I don't think are the type who want to stay it with the same employer for fifteen, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. And so we may still see that level of turnover that we would have with the retired folks because we have. That we would have with the retired folks because we have people that are moving on to different experiences, different organizations. And quite frankly, it's a little bit of a generational thing. Some of the younger generations are not expecting to stay with an employer for that long. So I'm not going to be surprised at all if after the next three, four, or five years. You find out you're still doing 20 to 30 recruitments every year. Because you just have this, this, this turnover occurring. It's my crystal ball. That's what I've been reading and hearing over the last several years.
I'll back you up. I looked at the Department of Labor studies and they say exactly the same thing.
Well, and I, there's several stories that I've read about, about what's being called the, uh, the, the great resignation. If you haven't read stories about that, look in the Atlantic. The number of people who are just saying time to move on to something else is staggering. Now, are they in government jobs? For the most part, no, they're in, uh, other types of industries, but. I think you're going to be seeing some of that in government, maybe not at the same level as you see, say in the service industry. But you're going to be seeing some of that in the government industry.
But you're speaking about, about a 18% turnover rate. 20 recruitments a, a year.
Uh, I wouldn't be surprised to see that continuing. Like I said, crystal ball. That's what I'm seeing.
Yeah, I would support at least minimum one person now that you need desperately and. I, I mean, I, I'm supportive of all of them. I'll just put it out there right now. I think Camille is asking for something reasonable. And so I'm supportive of your whole ask. Whether or not that needs additional digging remains to be seen. Um, but just so you know, that's where I stand on this. But if we have to come to a happy medium, we need to at least get you one more person. So you're not drowning anymore. So I think that's only fair to not just you, but all of the employees that are counting on you to do your job. You can't even do your job right now. And so we need to take that into consideration. So, um, definitely supportive of it, of the one immediate person. And then hopefully you can present your case, you know, even stronger and we can get some more data, information, whatever we need. To fully support our HR. HR is a dumping ground. You guys get everything. And, and, and I think it's hard sometimes for people to realize just how much you have to do in a day. And, and so I want to see your department supported because when your department is supported, all the departments are supported. If you're, if you're, if you're under supported, the entire city will be under supported. And that, that's my view of it. And so you have my support fully. But you know, respectfully to the other council members, let's, let's dig into this and you have the next study session and. Do what we feel need to do, but I'm supportive of the entire thing.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is finance. Oh, I'm sorry. IT's part administration. Can you turn that thing on Tony or pull it closer? I turned it on. Thank you. So. The, um, goals that we have for park development next year. A park asset, asset reservation software system. Uh, a recycling program and then, uh, getting the pros plan done. I don't think it's going to be all the way done by the end of the year because there's still a lot of questions that have been asked. A lot of work that still needs to be done to pull it together. So I think it will spill a little bit into next year. So that's why you see 20,000 of the total budget, which I'm not sure off the top of my head, uh, what that budget is.
I might mention to you, like this park, um, reservation software, we've been wanting for quite some time and some of them are $30,000. So it's, it's kind of good. We haven't just blown the, blown our wad because we want to make sure it's right. But this would do not only our parks, it would do, it would do the kayak reservation as well and, and things like that. And, um, so.
Any questions on the parks narrative of goals?
I think that the pros plan, that's in the pros plan, do March 1st.
You're probably right. I'm not sure of the exact timeframe for that. But it's also, I, I do know that that, that due date is a little squishy. So as long as you are in process and you are doing your public outreach, you've got drafts going and it's working its way through. To approval by your legislative body, they'll let you fudge on that just a little bit.
I just want to say it's important to get that done.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Green. It sounds like they've done a great job so far. I was happy with what I heard of the public works committee mean. Yeah.
Yeah. Just a question, Tony. Does the, the park asset reservation software, does that include the, the, uh. Canoe and kayak rental facility?
I believe that's what the mayor just said.
I just said that.
You just said that?
Yep.
You're going to do it for 10, $10,000 represents just software.
That's an annual subscription. So it will be 10,000.
This software.
Okay. Okay. And there's, there's no other action that needs to take place to, to implement that whole thing.
Just the time of the ITS staff and the park manager to, uh, get it on our system and get it up and running.
I think there's some policy issues buried in there, but I'll, I'll.
I agree with you.
This is hard to do because that's on my list of things that we need to add.
That's, that's a huge one.
The rules.
Is the rules that it go into the.
Our new park manager is going to walk in with a whole bunch of stuff to do.
I'm, I'm looking for decision rules that will guide the software and that's going to be a huge.
But don't, I mean, I'm not, this isn't me, but I believe, um, that's, that's actually a mayor and, and figuring out the, this, the. Function of, I mean, I'm not talking about how many, what the fee is for the kayak rental or the paddle. But the administration rules of it, that's a, that's a, the mayor and.
You set the fee as well.
Yeah.
So it's, it's the full meal deal.
I know the Parks Commission, we were talking about this years ago, about is it a lottery? What's the percentage? How are we, I mean, we didn't come to any conclusions. But that, that's been silent since then. And I think the Parks Commission should have that discussion to make sure it's fair for the community.
That's actually coming up before the end of the year to the council.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay. So by the end of the year.
That's what we're trying, but yeah, and I didn't mean the fees. I just meant the organizing it with the stuff.
If council member ever sold has a comment.
Tony, uh, can you talk about this recycling program? Is this just going to be within the parks or just the, uh, all of the cities? Uh, under all the seas umbrella or?
As I understand this, it's specific to, um, our parks only that we would have. Containers where people could put recycling, recyclable materials versus things that go to the landfill. I will tell you, based on my experience in Des Moines, that, um. It's likely not going to be very successful because people will have something in their hand they need to get rid of and they will throw it into the first available. You can separate things out. You can have really good signage. And you're still going to have some, um, contamination going into your recycling, um, bins. The key is how much and how much effort do you need to put in, in order to separate that back out? So you're only putting in the recyclables. One thing we may do is say, the only thing we want recyclable is stuff that we know actually has value. That it, for example, uh, aluminum cans, you can actually almost break even on those. Maybe some plastics, but when you start getting into other recyclables or composting things, that becomes much, much more difficult. So that will be a program that the parks manager can work on, work with our operations people. Uh, to come up with a program and a plan that will have it, the best chance of success.
You have to actually dig through those bins and make sure and separate stuff out. Public Works, does, do they do that?
That remains, I, I don't know if they're doing it now, uh, and how we've, uh, put that together. That, that's what's going to, to drive how we do that. One possibility is partnering with our, our local.
Harbor Wildwatch is interested in being a partner here. I noticed that this, this talks about a new franchise agreement under recycling program. What, what is that?
That's what I was going to get at with the garbage collection company.
Okay.
With Murray's disposal. Working with them to put together a recycling program as part of their franchise agreement. And I don't know if our franchise agreement, if we even have one or if when it's, uh, due to be renewed. But we certainly can talk to them since they are the experts in this area.
And, and how do we arrive at the number of $8,000?
The number that was put in there from last year, I believe. So, uh.
Okay.
It's really just a random number in my opinion.
Yeah. This gets back to staff time. I mean, this is something that's been there a while and it probably will still. And it's probably going to require either a staff time or a council or an ad hoc committee. Cause obviously first you would start out and see if Murphy's, your local person would do it. And then if they do, that's easier. If they don't, then you've got to get special trash cans where maybe it's only the size of a, of a bottle. So they don't put their whole trash in there. So it's, it's a, it's, it's going to be, it's going to, I look at it as it's going to need council involvement to get off the ground.
Right. And, and as I said, Harbor Wildwatch is willing to do it, especially down in Jersey's Park and, and train and educate people. On what, on the importance and get those cans down there and maybe, maybe that's a good place to start with them.
Yeah. Start small and grow from there. I think it's great.
Yeah. And we have to be, I think, I know with our, with home recycling, if you keep putting too many things in there week after week that don't belong. They cut you off. They won't take, they won't pick your, yeah, they send you letters. We got one, one time. It was not, it was supposed to be for our neighbor. I'm like, wait a minute, I did not put stuff in. So it was for our neighbor, but I got it. I got one of those letters and I didn't even know they did that until, until I got one in error. And they're like, if you don't quit putting this stuff in your recycling bin, we will cut off your recycling. We will not pick up from you. So I'm assuming it would be the same kind of a thing with parks, you know, that you, you have, if, you have to make sure someone is sifting through there. Before the collection day would be to make sure that what is supposed to be in there is in there and what isn't, isn't. Because I think that they would cut it off if we weren't honoring. They do, they do for households. I even called to confirm when I called to tell them it wasn't me. I'm like, you do this? Like you just cut off people's recycling? They're like, we have to. Because then we have to absorb the cost of sifting through it all and, and they don't, they don't do that. They will not do it. So something to be aware of, which means more education probably necessary, the more, the more the better.
That amazing. Yeah. I had no idea.
The things you learn, huh?
It kind of begs the question, should we be looking at this for next year? I'm hearing a low probability of success. And parks is going to have a, a full plate next year, I am sure.
It looks to me like one of those things that, that has been on the to do list for a few years. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
So it's just kind of raised up to the point where it's, it's, it's turn to be looked at, but I agree with you. Parks, the parks manager has a lot of work to do. And one of the first things that I'll do with the parks manager is start working through the priorities. And if this isn't a priority based upon everything else, then this will be pushed off to the following year.
The thing is, a lot of times this is a placeholder, meaning if you take this off, you may not remember in two years to put it back on. So it's kind of one of those reminders. Sure. It's not a life and death if we don't get to it. But if we have the extra time or extra involvement of, of volunteers, we don't want to take it off and not, not remember it.
I guess that's one view. My view is if you're busy chasing butterflies that you don't intend to catch, um, you, you're just wasting your time.
Yeah.
Don't even divert it. Just get honest and say, we're not going to do it this year. We'll look at it next year.
But I've also heard from past council members and citizens where they're surprised that others do and we don't.
Well, let, let me just remind us that we're not supposed to be putting things on and off the budget right now. We're just supposed to be listening to, to presentations, right?
Yep.
Cause I'm trying to be really good. I'm proud of you, Robin. I just want you to know. See me over here sitting on my hands.
No, and I know there's some good things that council member Wook wanted to, and I, you know, we didn't have time to put it in there yet. So she's being patient too. So.
So I, I'm looking at the schedule here and evidently I jumped the gun by having Keith come down here to present next. Cause the mayor is correct, finance is supposed to be next, but since Dave has to sit here through the whole meeting, if you don't mind, I'd like to have Keith jump in. And, uh, talk about his, uh, objectives for next year. And then we'll get to Dave. Right? So we're on page 52 of the budget, Keith, with, um, starting with professional services, the biannual IT security audit.
Yeah. Good evening. Um, so I have my, my goals and, uh, objectives from our department. I would do.
Objectives.
Uh, so first item is, uh, establish a biannual, um, IT security audit. To implement the practice of conducting a biannual IT security audit.
Excuse me, Keith. Hey, could I, could I just please have you speak up just a tad bit, please?
Or pull, yeah, pull that closer and get real close to it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is that, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. And it's weird trying to talk with this thing on.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the first item is for the, uh, establishing a biannual IT security audit. This will basically be a IT se- security audit via a third party. To assess our security posture and make recommendations if needed. Staff will, uh, conduct a self audit in the off years. The number for that is, uh, 20,000 on a biannual basis.
And I, I want to comment on this one real quick. Uh, Keith and I talked about it. One of the things that a third party. Auditor will do is actually try to attack your system to see if they can get in. Which, uh, I think gives you a very good assessment of your vulnerabilities and how good your systems are to provide security. Cause I don't know how much you're paying attention to it, but the amount of stuff trying to get into systems all over the world is crazy. And all, all we need is one, uh, bit of ransomware to get into our system. And next thing you know, we're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to have our system unlocked. When Keith and I talked about this one, he says, he can see the stuff out there that's trying to get into our system. And there's attempts being made all the time. So doing this type of assessment, at least every other we're, year is a very good idea.
Yeah. I, I totally support this. Absolutely. And it's probably really cost effective, as they say. As the keeping somebody from charging us ransomware.
I have a question about this too. Um, do we have hacker insurance or whatever they call it for, in the event something should happen?
That is a good question. And, and Josh just left for a moment. I do know that WCIA through their liability insurance provided some, uh, IT type coverage to the cities in WCIA. But I don't know if AWC does or not.
It depends on. It depends on the protocol that we follow. So for instance, um, I can recall two incidences that occurred in the last three years. One we got reimbursed for and one we did not. So it, it depends on the protocol that we follow the steps after it happens. That was, but I'm not going to elaborate on that.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. Uh, next item there. The, uh, professional services. I mean, that's kind of a long, uh, description there, but basically the, the boiled down version of this one is. There are cables, um, that connect the other two buildings on this campus. Those cables are about as old as this building is. Uh, so they're about, uh, you know, 20 years old. And they're, uh, and do, uh, for an upgrade. I did, uh, replace a lot of the equipment, the networking equipment. So. Uh, by us replacing these cables, we'll be able to fully utilize the, the speed that the equipment is making available for staff. So, uh, the cost for that is, it's a one-time cost of, uh, $8,000 to, uh, upgrade those, uh, fiber optic cables. Any questions on that item before I move on? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Third item, um, that's also professional services. Um, we're looking to, um, migrate our data from. Box.com or to, um. Sort of a hybrid setup, but most of the data will be migrated to, uh, Microsoft 365.
Just a, just a question on that. Is there, um. Funding for, let's say, the people that use all this to make this transition from box over to Microsoft 365?
Um, I mean, this item is a request for, um, consulting services to, to make that migration. From box to Microsoft 365. That will mostly be for uh consulting services to make that migration. And my staff, my department will be working in conjunction with various other departments throughout the city. Uh, to try to make that as uh streamlined as as possible.
Okay, so you your shop then would be handling things like training and um service as far as issues that arise during startup and all that?
Yeah, my department along with uh whatever consulting company is uh selected at the time. Yeah.
Okay.
Is is there a reason why you're wanting to switch these services?
Well, as it calls out in that item, it will introduce a savings of about twenty thousand dollars annually. And we've had this service for a number of years now, but it seems to increase um basically annually because it's on a one year agreement. And it seems to go up somewhere between five to ten percent every year. And, you know, we're not really utilizing it. Fully for what we're we're paying for there. So uh we pay a pretty decent amount for the Microsoft three sixty-five services. So the idea is to move all that data closer to the applications where the staff use every day. So hopefully that'll make things more efficient for staff and make things a lot easier for everyone else because then it's one less thing that. People have to deal with and one less password and so on and so forth.
So is that something different than the number nine, the ongoing renewals of critical software subscriptions?
Yes, that is different from number nine.
This is one of the ongoing subscriptions that we have. It's just with, once we get this implemented, that twenty thousand, it it's actually buried in the one eighty-nine that you see here for next year, that will go away.
Yeah.
It it that will go up?
It will go away. So that number that you see on number nine will go down a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to see the correlation there. Thank you.
The other thing I want to comment on this one about is Keith is correct that we've been using this uh box system for many years. We have integrated an awful lot of our work into it, particularly in community development and public works. And, well, you know, some folks don't like change and they're nervous about this. So I've talked with the department directors about it and Keith has assured me that the consulting uh folks and his folks are going to work hand in hand with them to make sure that. These processes as smooth and as seamless as possible. But I can't guarantee there won't be a hiccup or two here. But the bottom line is, if the department directors show us that this is really a bad idea, which I don't think it is. Then we will figure out something else, but to save, starting at twenty thousand and like like Keith said, next, the following year, it'll be twenty-four thousand and then it'll be twenty-nine thousand, then it'll be thirty-two thousand. Uh, it just keeps going up and up and up if we can consolidate our data. Storage using Office three sixty-five and make it work well for our departments. I think it's something we should do.
So you you don't foresee an increased cost in the Microsoft three sixty-five subscription?
I'll let let Keith answer that question. I'm sure it will go, they all go up.
Yeah, yes, they all they all go up, but the thing that. The Office three sixty-five subscription gives us that the box doesn't is. The 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 Office three sixty-five subscription is a multi-year agreement, so we're kind of locked in and we don't have to worry about the increases right now. But after our agreement is up, then there's a there's a possibility that it'll go up or is it possibility that it stays the same? But we really won't know until the 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 current term ends.
A box is a yearly cost that goes up every year, is that what? So so we're so we're looking at potential savings there.
Yes.
Is this a storage vehicle? Is that what we're talking about?
It is.
And and is three sixty-five in the cloud or is it not in the cloud? Are we not using that?
They're both in the cloud.
Okay.
So so just another question, I guess, to to your point, Tony, these systems can work concurrently for a while? Called the old.
Yeah.
Transfer thing, don't let go of it till you got the other one firmly in your hand.
It's a little tricky with data migrations because. And that's why I kind of said earlier that we'll have to do this really in conjunction with the departments because. There's a lot of add moves and changes that are happening with the data that's up there. So you can't move something that's being added, you know, uh, things are being added to and things are being changed. That gets tricky. That's how you get data loss. So what we end up having to do is. Either find a way to do this after hours, so they're not directly impacted during the day, or we find some other way where. We say, okay, here's a time window. You can't, you know, do anything with this and we're just gonna try to migrate this over. So we we either way, we can't do it without involvement from, you know, without uh the involvement of the the staff, so they have to kind of work with us on that when we get to it.
And I think what Councilmember Heinz is saying is, can we essentially keep using Box for the day to day stuff? Migrate the, I mean, copy the my the data into a a database by itself and then migrate it over to three sixty-five? And then do a cut over once we know three sixty-five is working properly.
There's, there's different ways to go about actually executing on something like this, but really, um. Maybe we won't really know until we can get to a a planning phase for it because we're not, we're not there yet. This is just saying we're gonna earmark funds to. Uh, obtain resources to be to be able to start a plan and look at, you know, what is it gonna take to execute this?
I would think timing would be a big part of it because you'd want to get it done before the next box.com contract rolled around or else you'd miss that first year savings.
Right.
So just something that I'm sure you're gonna consider in your planning.
Yeah.
Once you decide to do it, do it.
Yeah. And hopefully it's the the right time of the year.
Well, that's a, I I don't want to belabor the point, but that's a big deal. You're talking people who use this data daily in many cases, I'm sure. And they can't afford a a slip up. Okay, they gotta be in business. Okay. So it would seem to me that that we should be planning right now for some overlap of these systems called, hey. It's the old wing walker theory. You don't let go of one till you got the other one firmly in your hand. That's the reason he's old.
Councilmember Heinz, I could not agree with you more, having done um changes to uh large billing systems, migration of data over into new systems. Getting a new finance system up, a new HR system up. Absolutely. You you carefully plan, you test, test, test.
Yep.
Uh, and you make sure that when you do finally make that final cut over, everything was working as well as it possibly can.
Yeah, and by the way, i- i- if that means some excess funds, okay, or whatever it takes, I.
Well.
I'd love to see what that involves.
If we do need extra funds, we'll we'll come to the council and ask for them. I mean, it it's the data mission critical systems. Cannot be disrupted.
Exactly.
Okay, okay. Uh, next item is uh number four there. That item is to basically upgrade the uh short tail, uh the physical parts of our our phone system. That are kind of distributed throughout the various um city buildings. They're pretty much at the end of the their hardware lifecycle there.
I mean, we're getting to the point where. We don't have enough spares. We were scrambling for um phone equipment and keeping everyone hooked up and operating.
Blades are, these blades are not necessarily replacing the phones. They're replacing parts to make it happen. I mean, our phones would cost a hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars.
It's not, it's not the handset that we have at our desk. It's equipment that's in the server room, correct, Keith?
Yeah, it's it's.
And it's spread out.
It's in, it's spread out and it's in places that people don't see it, but it's uh it's pretty old and um it's starting to fail. My hope is that it it makes it until next year. Uh, but basically this item is to try to address that issue. Any questions on that item before I move on? Like, no, okay. Uh, number six is um small tools and equipment. Um, this is basically to. Uh, replace computers. In my department. We have about three machines, three to four machines each. Um, they're used for different functions and um. That's basically what that I line item is there for, just to replace those machines. Some of them, I want to say maybe like two of the three machines that we did actually replace this year, they're actually defective. With issues that aren't covered under warranty, so there are things like that, so. That we're looking to take care of on number five there.
And and how many computers is that?
Have to look and see.
Wasn't this like eight or nine?
Yeah, it's somewhere around eight or nine for those.
Wait, number five, what I think that's. That six was more. I think five was.
Five is for the ITS staff only. They have some very specific needs in their computer equipment that the other employees don't need, in in particular. Computer that allows them to do testing of some of the software and things that we are doing to keep the system up and running and safe. And um some of them, they need computers that, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Keith, that are not connected to the internet. Or any of our systems, so they can deal with a variety of issues. And I'm not explaining this very well. You're better at it than me.
Yeah, I mean, you're you're on the right track. There's there's these basically the administrative type machines that we have. The access sensitive information there, so um that's just one of the one of the machines out of the bunch, basically, but yeah.
And I believe, um, I think this is for all of them. I was I was suggesting, which isn't in here, was was not doing them all at the same time. So you did.
That that's that's number s- number six.
Right, I I'm wondering how many number five is accounting for?
So I was actually doing number five.
Oh, okay.
Was not, was having, I get a little my myself, I get a little worried if you replace, if all IT replaced all. And however many IT people there are, if you do it all at the same time. Then if something goes wrong or there's a recall or anything like that, you're all vulnerable. Whereas if you did half of them and you did the other half the following year, then you still have your old system there. And you can see if that was the best computer to use and then you do the next one. But I believe this was all of them. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And and how many is that? In number five?
It's about twelve.
Twelve?
Yeah.
So each each of your, the people and you and each of your uh employees have. Four piece?
Yeah.
Is there any particular reason why, other than a Mr. Piesekki explaining some of these are not online?
There there are special access machines there. There are me machines that we use for testing uh like software. Different types of software deployments, things of that nature. There are things that we we try to do on our side to kind of make things easier for staff, like kind of QA type things where we might. Need to deploy software, so we try and test it on ourselves first to see how it goes. Uh, if there's any issues, then we try to iron that out prior to pushing those things out. We try to make these these. These changes as painless as possible because, you know, um, change is hard for some people here, so. Um, we try and do all we can to make it as easy and seamless as possible for staff.
And change that causes problems is not good change.
Yeah.
How old are these of the twelve?
They they, if I remember from from the list, Keith, there there were some that were four, five or six years old.
Yeah, I mean, anything that we we suggested to be replaced, I mean, they're, we, they're typically in a five to seven year. Kind of timeframe there to in terms of how old they are. So um for for a computer, believe it or not, that's pretty old. So, I mean, because when you look at electronics, it's more about hours. Um, so the longer they're on, you know, the more they they're aging. So, thank you. Okay, and number six there. That's basically um looking to replace uh. Computers for all the departments that are listed out there. Uh, those machines are kind of in the same boat as ours where they're. Somewhere between five to seven years old. And some of them are having issues. Uh, a lot of them, actually all of them, they're they're all out of warranty, so if there was some sort of like major hardware issue with those. I mean, we wouldn't get any support from the manufacturer at at this point.
And what's the numbers of computers associated with that?
About twenty-four, twenty-five. Maybe up to thirty?
Yeah, it's about thirty-two.
Out of employees that have computers, we probably have a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty computers total.
Yeah, that that's fine. I mean, I I don't need an exact, I I'm just trying to get a just a a general average cost per computer.
And the other thing to remember about this part of the IT function is, uh, Keith and I have talked this over. And if an employee's computer is working fine. If even if it is past its warranty period, if it's not creating any problems, if the software works just fine. And we don't know of any future things, for example, sometimes a piece of software is about to be upgraded and your computer just can't handle it, you need a new computer. All of those things will go into the decision as to whether or not we actually replace the computer. It'll be discussion with the employee and the department director. So I look at this number as this is the maximum we'll spend. Or we hope that we have to spend on computer replacements next year. Obviously, if things, if you have something blow up on you, you're gonna spend more. But uh I would hope that this number might come in just a little bit under that. Given that some things are working just fine and under the old, if it ain't fixed, broken, don't fix it.
Well, I I appreciate that and I hope, you know, you won't be here all that much longer. I I hope that that is the. The decision making that the future administration follows through with because.
I think it's the decision making that Keith and his staff are going to be following. We've we've talked about it. And um like a good professional, he has made his argument about. Let's catch things before they go wrong. And I I tend to agree with that, but. Sometimes you got to balance costs and in expense and functionality and all those kind of things. So each one of these things will be a one-on-one decision. As to whether or not we replace an item.
And how many, how many computers have we replaced this year?
Wasn't it forty-eight? I think that's the number you gave me, Keith.
Uh, that's possible. I don't have that number uh here with me, but yeah, it was. It was a decent amount, uh, but the driving factor for anything that was replaced uh over the past eighteen months has really been COVID. Uh, a lot of the staff, when I got here, uh, they were kind of scrambling, trying to figure out, you know, how do we do this remote work thing? So and all they had was desktops. There was no laptops here. So over the past eighteen months, what I did was try to uh look at the fleet of hardware that we have out there and look at, you know, all the different functions that everyone performs here and. It basically necessitated that we all switch to laptops and docking stations to be able to, you know, continue doing work and serve in the public, so. That's basically what we ended up doing. Thank you.
What do you do with these old computers?
Um, any equipment uh that houses data, um, basically the first thing that we do is uh we archive the data in case someone needs anything uh from that data set. And then after that, um, we go through a. I think if I can, yeah, there is this this kind of wiping process that we do. Basically just to scrub any uh remnants of the information from the hard drives. Um, and then after that, um, we call a third party surplus company, uh, and they come and pick up the. The equipment, they take it away and then they redo basically everything that we did. Uh, they rewipe the drives and. They, you know, responsibly recycle uh the electronic equipment in ways that we can't do internally.
And and remember that when it comes to surplusing city equipment, it has to be approved by the council. So, you know, once a year or so, we will bring, or once or twice a year, we bring you a list of here's all the stuff we want to surplus. Here's how we're gonna surplus it and you approve it.
Some of the um the forty-eight this year council didn't have to approve because um it came from CARES Act money. And as you know, um, when everyone was teleworking at home, they had no desktop. Their desktop was at City Hall. So um IT was scrambling to um even HR to to basically buy all these laptops. So that people could work from home because they had to. And so, you know, then instead of having IT have to now service those computer and service the desktops. We replace that with a lot of the desktop. now service those computer and service the desktops, we replaced that with a lot of the desktops when they came back. So there wasn't two sets of computers that I T had to then um, work with staff on.
So everybody's using a laptop? Is that what you just said?
The vast majority of the staff um that need to, that have a need to either work from home or work remotely, they do have a laptop. So now they can, like a a lot of the construction supervisors, that's one of the things that uh that I can look at and say, I'm pretty proud of that, because, I mean, they're out there on those those job sites and they have everything they need, like right there on a tablet, like they've never really been able to do that. They had like three or four different things that they had to connect to be able to get information, and now it's just like right there at their fingertips on one device that they they bring and take home and they bring here and they work and or they go out on site and 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 work, so. Um, it's it's been a a pretty drastic change for a lot of them, but I think they've been able to embrace the the change and and see how it's uh, enabled them to to do their work more efficiently.
Yeah.
And it's a hybrid. Some some did just switch straight to laptops when they came back and some still needed monitors for their desk.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to number seven.
Um, yeah, so number seven is uh, basically just some safety equipment, uh, cleaning supplies and uniforms. Um, number eight would be.
I have a question about seven.
Okay.
Uh, clean supplies and personal safety equipment isn't? Do you have your own budget for that? Should that come out of some general closet that holds all that stuff? That is not necessarily a, just I T.
Um, I think most departments, they try to reuse and share what they can. Um, within there are certain items where kind of, when you want to go get it, you kind of need it at that time, and sometimes you can't get that because it's, you know, it's gone or it hasn't been replenished or whatever. So there's a lot of use cases around that that we've encountered, and that's kind of why that's there.
Okay.
Um, a lot of the equipment that we work on, um, we try to sterilize as it comes and comes and goes, so.
That's all I need, thanks.
Yeah. Uh, number eight is uh basically, basically to establish uh, some contracted maintenance for our uh, on our in, on our interruptible power supply units that are spread throughout the city. Um, those sup- power supply units supply um emergency power in case there's interruption to uh, the commercial power. Uh, and the amount for that is about twenty thousand annually. Um.
And is this something that, this is the first time I've ever seen this. Is this something that's been going on?
Uh, no, um, basically, I replaced them all, all the, on our, on our, and the U P S is basically, that's how I I refer to them instead of saying the the whole name, but uh, basically, I replaced all the U P Ss when I went in to do the the refresh. But it's to establish a um, a contracted maintenance where a third party would come in and they would service those units, like they do things, like they check the the acid levels in the batteries, make sure that that's still balanced. If there's any batteries that need to get replaced, they they swap those out at that, at that time, and there's no additional cost. Things of that nature, just to keep those units in good working order, because those units are what basically keep our network equipment online to keep the staff working at a time that there's like a power outage.
So hi- is that these uh, emergency power sources been, or I mean, it's, they, over the last ten years, is, have they been existed?
Yeah.
And has there been problems with any of them?
Yeah. Without the maintenance, um, like I know there's been two of them definitely that I had to just get rid of because it was, it was done. Uh, without the maintenance, the the acid levels in the batteries um, had basically boiled over and corroded the unit, so it's, at that point, it basically was a fire hazard. So um, that's why it's important to have those those maintenance.
Who was doing this maintenance before?
Uh, no one. That's why that issue occurred in the first place.
Well, uh, you know, I, this, I mean, that's uh fifteen hundred bucks a month. And I I don't know how many batteries there are, but that just seems like uh I mean, that's not something that your staff or Public Works or somebody, somebody else could do rather than contract us out.
I did kind of uh have Public Works look at some of these before, and it's kind of one of those things where it's neither side really knows enough to work on these things. It's almost like we know a little and we're comfortable enough working on them. But really, it's, it's critical enough to where it really needs a third-party expert to deal with these things. Uh, because when they, when they, those are, those are basically the the units that are the buffer between the power and uh, any sort of power surges or anything like that. There's like, they're like the last line of defense for all of that expensive equipment that we just put in, basically. So if they're not functioning properly, that means that all that that equipment is in jeopardy.
So Keith, these are acting as surge protectors as well?
They are. They are dual-function units. Um, they they act as surge protectors, and they also provide emergency power to those units.
Well, I'm I'm assuming that it's a twelve-volt deep cycle battery that has an inverter, it's changing it over to one-twenty?
Well, some of them are one-twenty, some are not. There's some upstairs that, you know, they have like sixty amps feeding them.
That have what?
Sixty amps that are feeding the the entire unit, so. I mean, it's, it's really big-time stuff, and you really need someone that knows what they're doing to work on these things. Um, it's kind of outside of my realm of expertise, even. There's some, some of the basic things that I know, but then there are things that are beyond and situational based that honestly, I'm not even comfortable with, with like touching some of them.
Well, I mean, it just, like I said, I've never seen this before in any budget, and I've been around here a while, and um, you know, just to see this as a new item, this is, it's very surprising.
Technology is advancing. But we, they didn't have a couple of years ago, they have today.
Well, I, that's why I asked. I mean, you had the system.
So let's not, let's not debate it now, though, because we're, we're five o'clock if we keep going. Sorry, but uh, there, okay, number eight, nine.
Yes, um, so nine is basically, um, it's the renewals of various software subscriptions that are used across the city and I mean, that the the amount is about one eighty, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand annually. And, you know, the breakdown is there. Um, a lot of the things that'll be renewed is software that was purchased in uh last year. Uh, a lot of those, what we do with the, any software that we acquire is that we look at the the terms that are there. Sometimes you have one year, three year, and five year, so what we do is we we basically just take whatever the cost-effective option is out of the, out of the bunch. So for a lot of the software that we acquired last year, a lot of those things were on one-year agreements because it was more cost-effective to do that versus trying to have like a three-year or a five-year agreement, which would be more expensive, so every year you have to, you know, renew those things, so that's basically the cost for for those items there.
I think last, last year, when we decided to go this way, you explained all that to us pretty thoroughly.
Yeah.
And you said that it would be ongoing, so this is just uh, what you said would happen, it's happened, right?
Yes.
Nothing new here.
Nope.
But I I would like to see, you know, for our session, you know, maybe a little breakdown, because some of, when we did do that, as uh, Councilman Rodenberg mentioned, some of those weren't always you one year, some were two or three years. So um, so because we did, we spent a hu- couple hundred thousand or more on renewals, but again, some were one year, some were two or three.
Yeah.
And so um, if you would provide counsel, you know, in a, in a week, maybe Tony can help you, uh, you know, what, what if these are all, some of these might be more than one year, are they? Or if you could just, you don't have to answer that now. But if you could provide, again, because since we approved a couple hundred in the CARES Act, um, or the upgrade, I guess it was the upgrades. And again, some were more than one year, so kind of a little more understanding of of which which, which ones these are new, when other ones were three years. Uh, you might have done that, I think I.
Uh, everything that's listed there or that amount that's there, um, everything there, that's, that's one year.
Okay, so, okay, so all this is one year.
But we can get you a list of our, of all of our software packages and how much we're paying for them, whether the one, two, or three.
Okay, okay, but that would be a renewal as Councilman Rodenberg, so but yeah, if we could see, you know, what, how many we have, what is one, two, three, or whatever years for ongoing years, that'd be great.
Okay.
And and there, there's no options to these, um, I'm I'm assuming that we're
We checked into multiple years being a break, and they don't really do that.
Yeah, yeah, or that we can own them outright.
Nobody, nobody lets you own them outright anymore. They, the software folks figured out that they make a heck of a lot more money by charging you a small amount for the software and then a annual subscription.
Yeah.
But the subscriptions include all the updates and everything.
Correct. Yes, you don't have, you don't have to worry about that.
Thing is bang it up.
Well, that, that there.
Then you'd have to buy something else in two months.
Yeah, there, there are some options, and there's not many out of that bunch where you can buy the thing outright, but the cost is like astronomical. It just like I said, we look at everything and we try to choose whatever we think is the cost-effective option, so, but yeah. And that's all I have for objectives there.
Okay, any other final questions for?
I have a question for Keith. Keith, uh, just when it comes to uh staffing, the support staff, su- su- I T S support to staff ratio, what does that, I know that number is one point six five, but what does that mean and what should it be?
It's basically representing one I T support birth person to sixty-five staff. Um, unfortunately, my industry doesn't have like a, a good baseline for what that ratio should be. But from my experience, it it tends to vary um based on many things. Uh, some places tend to aim for uh, one person to fifty staff persons. Others, I think the gold standard that people try to aim for is like one to thirty-five, but it's really hard to do that, because that's expensive, that's a lot of people. Um, but typically, what what you see is people trying to work towards that.
With your experience and 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 knowledge in in an operation like Deep Harbor, uh, what should that, what do you think would be ideal for us?
Well, I spent a good deal of time uh, kind of looking at the the data, um, looking at the day-to-day operations. Um, I mean, some places it it varies. Um, sometimes you have more like I T support staff and then less higher, higher up, um, or more advanced I T staff. Other times it's the reverse of that. You have, you know, less I T support staff and you have more higher-level staff. Um, but in this instance, uh, based off of the various, you know, the thousands and thousands of tickets that I've seen come across just this year alone, um, it seems that we should have more I T support staff um, upfront.
So what kind of ratio?
Um, I mean, I I think from what I've seen, it looks like we need two I T support staff there. And we already have the higher-level engineering position that's, that's available, but based off of the volume of tickets, the types of tickets that we've seen from the staff, it necessitates at least two I T staff. Um, kind of lower-level I T staff to deal with triage and all those, those issues.
But you, one thing, um, I got two points, um. I guess three points, just I want, I want um, counsel to hear this. So you showed me a graph of how many tickets had come in in like the last six months, and then it went up and down, up and down, and how many tickets had came in, and then what I, and how many hours that did. And then I added up all the hours and I divided by how many weeks or times you showed, and it worked out to twenty, about twenty-five hours a week um, of ticket time, and so that's not even a full-time person, and I I T's job is not necessarily working with the public, but actually supporting all the departments, is that correct?
Yeah, that'll be correct, um, at that time.
Outside of making sure that we're not going to get hacked and and various upgrades and everything like that, your job is mostly to support the departments, and if we're not swapping out equipment every year and a half to two years, then we shouldn't be. I mean, we did a lot more swap-outs, forty-eight computers this year. That's that's almost, that's almost fifty percent. And we, hopefully, we wouldn't be swapping uh, fifty computers every year, a year and a half, two years old, and then we won't be needing, you know, tw- twenty, all, all that. So isn't that, we don't want to go at the rate we've been going. Isn't that correct?
Well, the graph that you saw was um, amount of hours per week.
Right.
But the issue there was, that was only the request, and that did not include projects or tasks. So with all three of those included, it's actually about sixty-three hours, sixty to sixty-three hours a week for two people.
Which is still, if if you've got, if you're wanting four and it's sixty-three hours for two people, and that's an eighty percent of your job is helping staff with I T. Um, I mean, I'll just, yeah, but that's a lot of hours per week.
And and that, those hours, correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, were are the type of things that the mayor is actually talking about, helping the operations continue up, move, continue going along smoothly, and you would split it out we between a task, a ticket, and a project. And what we had shown the mayor was the tickets, and I had been, I I'd shown you, uh, I thought I'd shown you a second one that include the tasks as well. And that doesn't include the higher-level stuff um, that you were uh, talking about earlier. What we have in the, in the department right now is the I T manager, the engineer, systems engineer, whatever that is, and one um one of our desks printed type person.
Right.
And that's what we are proposing for next year. Um, for a couple of reasons, as we outlined, and the item's not proposed for the, for the department. Um, we are replacing all of our equipment uh, with the the reflexments that we have next year, so we will now have all new equipment that I think none of it, well, there'll be a few things older than three years old, but for the most part, everything will be pretty new. Um, second, we want to get a feel for how that uh, newer level, because higher level position is, is is working and how it's helping out with the system, and is it uh, helping us not requir- requires many of the help desk tickets and the like. And if by mid-year we think that we still need that fourth position, we're going to be coming back to council saying we would like to talk about that fourth position, but for now, the mayor and I are comfortable with a three-person I T department. And we'll take a look at it next year.
I think, you know, in the last year, we spent uh, six hundred, at least six hundred thousand dollars on new equipment. We bought forty-eight computers, we brought on new staff, we have all these licenses, we build, we spend, you know, a million dollars a year at least. If that's is not supported properly, then we're not getting the most out of the dollar we spent.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll save my comments for another meeting.
And I just also want to thank you for the work you've done, because what you do, what the I T department does do, they don't talk to the public, but they make it so that every other person in this, in this city can talk with the public and can give the public answers that they need, that's required by computer and can require by data. So it is a vital job that you do for everybody in this community, in this, in this city that does deal with the public on a daily basis, so it's important work.
Yeah, thank you.
Keith, I had one last question, um, back to the U P S, are, do those support the sewer lift stations, or is this just computer battery backup?
Uh, it does not support um, any of the wastewater functions. It is just um I T uh, networking equipment mostly.
Okay, because I knew there were battery backups for the lift stations, and I didn't know if this was part of that or not.
No, they're, they're kind of similar, though. They they kind of serve the same function.
Okay, thanks, and thank you, as, as Commissioner Wukes and I echo all of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dave, you're on again.
Oh, thank you. Page fifty-eight, we'll skip the function for finance unless you have any questions on it and what we do. Page fifty eight. We'll skip the function for finance unless you have any questions on it and what we do. And real quickly, the goals, number number one is kind of an ongoing one really brought to light by the pandemic and it's essentially looking for ways to go paperless that would make us more efficient. And should we hit another shutdown, rather than have to have, like, for example, the two accounts payable people come into the office because physically they have to be here to process and pay the bills. Perhaps we could have one come in and scan everything and the other one could work at home and actually get the bills paid. And and so that's where that's going. And and the the issue is finding is, does the right software exist? Is another city currently doing something like this? And how would it work here without too much of a disruption to operations? And 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 so that's that's something we're working on now, but it's also a goal for the future until we get it. Two is coordinating the budget and the capital improvement plan. There's a big step towards that in the back of this budget right here. And where we want to go with this is when we start, when we give you the forecast once a year, we want to have some of these out year capital projects put into that so we can actually more realistically look at where we're headed. And then through number three and four, we're working on a little bit of part of those for 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 twenty two. You're going to see those in the objectives also. Internal service funds, we're looking at creating an I T S internal service fund for, not for twenty two, but it'll hopefully pop into the twenty three budget. And so things like this objective nine miscellaneous, that hundred eighty nine thousand would be entirely in the I T S fund. And it would be distributed out to the other funds through a billing rate. And so we'd be discussing the I T billing rate and how it's allocated to the departments. And that would fluctuate each year depending on how much I T is going to spend. And then lastly, indirect cost allocation, we've been flirting with this for years. We're going to try to get something in place. This is something the auditor has wanted. I I haven't pulled the trigger on it for years because the auditor always seemed to be happy. And if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And and so we kind of just pushed it along. What I've been doing in the background is quietly counting invoices by function and departments, agenda items by function. So we're going to have a basis to start allocating stuff out. I'm not quite sure how we're going to implement it, but ultimately in the end, you're going to see all of the overhead and public works go to one department or one section. And then that overhead will be allocated in a reasonable and rational basis to the projects, to the functions. And and so we'll be able to load up all of the activities that we do and start getting more true costs. Okay, so that's and and that's a big project. And what makes it so big, it's real easy. I could dump a plan out to you probably by Friday. But a- again, how does it affect how we do our job on the streets and 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 our operations? And so we want to try to get it in with minimal impact to our operations and in a way that it'll benefit the city and not just satisfy an audit requirement. Any questions on?
Yeah, just comment wise, both number two and number four sound great. That's your your indirect cost allocation. That's wonderful. I I I manually do that right now. I go put the park, put the all the elements of public works back into public works. And I think from a cost standpoint, none of that, but from a a an operation standpoint, the idea of putting all that together, because it is under one department, okay, that's a fabulous idea. The coordinate the budget and the capital improvement plan, you're linked into the work that Tony, you showed me the other day where you got the out years.
Between between him and Jeff.
Oh, okay, okay, great. That's another wonderful.
I just, I just took credit for the idea.
It was his idea, great idea. No, that's, that is great stuff. It gives you a sneak preview of what's coming at you, okay?
And and you try to typically level things out a little bit when you're doing that. Great.
How is this gonna?
It's one thing if you collect all that data through the indirect cost allocation and that's your function to collect the data. But that has to be transferred to the departments to take that data, turn it in information and make changes in their process to maximize what you've given them. And that's a good way for them to do that is to realize what their real costs are.
That's a hundred percent because it's very difficult on my side to find out what our real costs are. Like myself, I'm spread X percent general fund, probably I think it's forty, twenty five percent streets and pull it all together. What you you and and that's really what we're after.
That's I echo what both the council people have said. I think it's a great idea. And I what's the name of the, I can never remember the acronym for the program that staff uses, especially in public works, to allocate how much time they spend on each project?
They have several systems. I'm not quite sure what they use, but they don't interface with the financial system. That's would be one of the issues with that.
Well, what what is that called?
Off the top of my head, I can't remember.
You know what I'm talking about?
I believe I do.
Yeah.
Oh, Cartograph.
Cartograph, here you go. Yeah, that that I think that there's so much, Jeff Langham gave me a demonstration of that Cartograph system. That's, that is, I believe, an underutilized tool here. I mean, that is a, that is a wealth of information. And that can track costs very, very accurately. If it's being used properly. And I think it would, it it could be used as a educational tool for the council on how much these projects and and what is actually being spent on different things, where that goes, if it's tracked properly. I'm I'm assuming you would try and use some of that information.
I would love to and we will certainly look at it, but the issue, believe it or not, and and I scratch my head and wonder why not also? When you have a system here that's standalone and then you have the financial system here, the reconciliation between the two is monstrous at times. And you spend more time reconciling and scratching your head why, when a person in my position, I'm I'm concerned with where did that dollar go and how how many dollars went out towards that project? So if I know I wrote checks totaling five million dollars for a certain project and Cartograph says we only wrote checks for four point seven million, who am I gonna, which system am I going to listen to? I'm going to go to the one that the dollars actually went out with because that's what I care about. Now, Jeff is caring about other things with Cartograph and and so I think what we're seeing is if, not that it can't be reconciled, but we're looking at more resources, in in other words, more staff to reconcile those two positions. And is that really in the best interest of the city? And that's kind of the decisions we're going to be looking at and going ahead.
Well, I I don't care where it is, as long as somebody in in that example you used, which I know is just probably not a a case scenario, but I'd hope somebody would know where that three hundred thousand is in the end.
We do use Cartograph and and we use it to support our numbers in in the financial system.
Okay.
Okay, so then that got us to page fifteen. We're on page fifty nine, is that right?
Yep, let's go to the goals on page fifty nine. We talked about number one just a little bit. If you have any questions, just pull me back and we'll get in there. We talked about two. Three is a kind of a carryover from this year. We're in the middle of doing this and this is just a really big job. And I heard Denise's name mentioned earlier. This is when she gets her her ticket punched, if you will, on accounts payable and 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 the cash receipting. This is going to be her baby and and she's really strong in this kind of thing and and she's really excited to get into it. And we're going to utilize the talent that we've hired. And then accounts payable, this is the paperless option I mentioned in the earlier goals. Municipal payments module is a parks reservation system we're exploring. We already have Springbrook Software as our financial software package. And we do billing and payments through utility billing and and they have an online portion. We do the credit cards. This system would be the same thing and we're in the process of setting it up right now. And Jeff and Jackie have been working on the efficacy of this for the purposes of renting or the storage of the kayaks and and all kinds of park fees and everything. And it looks really promising that this will work for us.
And will it work with the reservation system?
I think so. We're we're kind of feeling our way into it. We just created our merchant account to do that. We we had to have a similar set of accounts like for utility billing set up. And we're stepping into that. I think it will satisfy our needs.
Okay, great.
And then lastly, I'm not considering retiring. I really don't care to talk about this too much. I I really would start crying. I mean, I love working here. It's it's a nice place. But I turn, unfortunately, I'm one of the over fifty five folks. And I kind of made a promise to myself when I hit sixty five, I'm not going to work anymore. I want to do something different. And that's less than two years away. And so I think we came up with a, you know, how do you replace this? I mean, if I say I'm leaving in three months, what if you don't hire someone for two months? Can I share all that?
No, then you just can't leave.
You can break the promise to yourself. I I do it all the time.
My wife might shoot me though, but this is sort of to get somebody on board and this person would have the skill set that the city would want to 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 replace me. And in the process, what's this person going to do? Sit in my office and watch what I do? No. This person will start with the indirect costs and and start putting some of these new things in. And then when I'm starting the budget, hey, come here, you know, come here, here's what you got to do. And then we'll share and and I'll I'll jump into that other thing. And and the goal would be, I would think, to get somebody in this summer, because that's when the budget starts up. And and the real hard part about it is not really mechanical part. It's, this is kind of a, it's more of a feeling job. You you know, you you sense what the city needs and what the people need. And and it's ge- getting someone that can learn. And that's, I've been sharing a lot of it with Jackie, like, here's what I'm thinking, Jackie. Here's what I'm doing this. And and unfortunately, as I have operated all these years, it's it's I just sense what's needed and 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 sort of know. And so we're hoping to get somebody that I can share that with. And then when the time comes, the city is not left high and dry.
I have a, I have a question. Could have been for Camille, but maybe Tony can answer it. I I see in his request form for that staff person, the intent would be to have that person move into a director position after year two, maybe ten years of training. But I, so my 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 question is we do all that and he's well trained and the person gets the intuition that he needs. Is this one of these, like we have to done, and for instance, the clerk's position or other positions, is this something we have to post? Then we go to the outside and now we have to interview a whole bunch of people. And then we're going to hire somebody that is not necessarily the person that has done all that training. Or is there going to be an exception made in that case?
So by policy, that's what we tend to do here. But I would argue that if the stated reason for creating this position and what you're looking for is somebody who has director material, that when the time comes, if they are the right person, they've demonstrated the ability to do the job, I would say no need to go out for the recruitment. Just go ahead and and.
Well, that would be my feeling exactly, but I I think there's some inconsistency in what we've done in the past.
And I really think that's something for the next mayor to think about and the next city administrator to think about.
Yeah, I actually was the one that asked Dave to put this in. Because, you know, we, the the person that's right below Dave, we've already asked if if a person would want to step in to Dave's role. And the person has said no. So so that I'm thinking about the future of the city. And when you've got really top key positions and no one understands their department like them, then you better plan. So as you can see, I mean, I don't, he may not even get to that. He may not even do this this year. But it's there in case he came to us next fall and said, hey, um, you know, I've seen, I've seen major key positions leave like that, like in two weeks or three weeks. You know, sometimes people wait until there, some things happen. You know, also, what happens if, you know, we're we're all vulnerable. What happens if we drive down the street and something happens? I mean, right now, if something happened to him, do we know, could could someone fill in? No. She could, okay.
Trust me, Jackie is super capable. The only thing she probably couldn't do would be the year end report.
Okay.
You could probably contract that out. Whether she knows or not, she can.
That's great. That's great, but.
Feelings that you say you have and that you're your best guess or your intuition and all that, that can only be achieved with years of experience. And so I would hope that that would be something you try to impart on this new individual as quickly as possible, if it could even be done.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, and I fully support this position for the, all the reasons that the mayor and Dave and and Tony have said. It may be different than what we've ever done or been doing, but change is necessary, especially in this world we're living in now. We have to get used to change, doing things different, preparing for the future. Because now we all know how uncertain the future really is. And so I'd rather have Dave training this person while he's still here than have to, you know, wait and catch up later. So I'm I'm totally, totally supportive of this, Dave. And as much as I don't want to think about you leaving either, but you know, Hawaii's calling and I understand.
He does say, he does say, why would I leave, you know?
So does this position sunset when you're gone?
I don't think it's expected to carry on. It was expected merely to morph into the finance director position, then it would.
Yes.
Yeah, that that's why I was wondering about the, on page fifty nine, where it talks about this position will be retained and filled.
I don't, oh, that's different than the, okay, that's probably needs to match what's here. On sixty one, I don't think it says that. That's where I was looking. But no, it's not, it's not expected to go on. It wasn't, it wasn't.
So Tony, that would be a policy thing where we would write in to that contract, like that this person is expected to fulfill the finance director's role upon his retirement?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, great.
This is very, very good. By the way, and Councilmember Rodenberg's comments, I think, were very appropriate. But we asked, we used to have to do successing planning, succession planning for everybody above a certain level and and management, chief engineer or higher. And you're right, it could be a truck running over them. It could be a, and this is the big one. A lot of really good people where they are limited in terms of where they can go upwards will go out. Okay, and I looked at at the various scales here, et cetera, and the various opportunities here. And to be quite honest, that is, I think, a very serious threat, okay? Where you'll have a real hot dog or a series of them and they're out the door before you know what happened, okay? And it's nothing that you did wrong. It's just that they're capable, their opportunities are limited and they'll leave.
I I always choose to say maybe they win the lottery and they.
That's right. That's right. No, absolutely. And particularly in this area, this area, good people, my gosh. You know, you read all the articles on trying to hire people here because they are so rare. So anyway, I'm very supportive of this and I I would even extend it and say, hey, this is something that Camille and the new mayor and that should should talk about, call, hey, what do we do? What do we do if bad things happen and to various members of the organization that are absolutely pivotal? Okay, and it's a, it's something that it ought to be go ongoing, let me put it that way. Because that way you're you're kind of prepared for the 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 next departure that could really damage your organization. Just my comments.
Right. Okay, so so we're at the brief break or we can go on or we need to know, so a lot of people haven't taken a break. I know.
Yeah.
And sometimes during our next session, I mean, I had to use the restroom, so I just left. So if you have to, don't feel like you have to stay. So we'll take a a five or ten minute break.
Okay.
Oh, four forty seven and we're on to police.
I thought I was here to apply for the finance director job.
He's not leaving.
Good evening, council, afternoon, I guess, evening. On not much here. We can go through it fairly rapidly, I believe. I'm sorry, sixty three. Rap budget. Six three. So not much real change to what we're doing. Our twenty-twenty-one budget is going along fine. We're tracking along about ten percent under budget now. I suspect that that gap will diminish a little bit. We have a couple of outstanding larger expenses towards the end of the year. But I think we're doing just fine there. A lot of legislative issues have popped up during this year that has caused us to increase our need for some training. I don't know if you caught in one of my council updates, biweekly updates, that the state gave us, I think, forty-seven thousand dollars to, to apply towards training and equipment, towards complying with the new legislation. So you'll see that some of our overtime numbers are a little bit higher. Some of that's due to the two vacancies that we had most of the year too. So still, still doing well though, but realize that the training budget is up a little bit. Um, let's see here. If we start working our way through things, the description of function hasn't changed much at all. You're familiar with that. Go through our, our goals here, narrative of goals. A complete and maintained staffing, as you know, we're sitting right now at twenty officers. We're budgeted at twenty-one. We're doing interviews at the end of this month and it looks like we have some very good candidates out of a pool of six or seven that should be interviewing. We have gotten word from one of our officers that they are likely moving on at the end of December, moving out of state for personal reasons. So that would slip us back to twenty, but I'm pretty confident that on this list, we might be able to get two viable candidates. So hopefully in early January, we'll be sitting here at fully staffed for the first time ever, actually. Let's see here. And the other stuff you're familiar with the community office or community service officer. Of course, I heard extensive conversation earlier about that. He works for our department two days a week, mostly doing property room, a little bit of community outreach and some special projects. The property room, as we get busier, continues to grow and expand and we're actually physically with all the number of items we have in there, it's pretty thin. So we need to keep up with what's called destructions. So in, in, in items of evidence and stuff, everything is logged and tracked every time it's moved to a different shelf. And there comes a period of time when a case is adjudicated or found property, time limits have been met that we can dispose of that property, but that's still a process in itself. And we've kind of fallen behind in that, simply a manpower issue. Even with a little bit of overtime thrown at the problem. So we could use a little bit more help in the property room there. And then we anticipate an uptick in public records requests for our body cam and dash cam videos. That, that program is fairly new, right? But as they get rolling and more and more incidents happen, we'll be getting requests for those videos that need and so this community service officer, we hope can fill that too. So we're just asking to change that from two days a week to three days a week. From a point four to a point six position. We're trying to get more self-sufficient. We're not relying on other agencies for as much of our training and we're doing that. We, we have a pretty decent in-house instructor cadre right now. We share our trainers with other agencies. They share theirs with us. That keeps our costs down in the training area as much as possible. And we just developed a relationship with the Navy. As a matter of fact, we're using their facilities and some of their instructors for some things for free. Maintain a positive community relations. I think we do an excellent job of that. When I continue to update departmental policies, I'll tell you that we have a policy service that we use called Lexipol. It's pretty much the standard across the country. I think forty percent of the police agencies in the country use Lexipol. And we've got all of the important policies in place. In good shape there. Liability wise, I think we're locked down pretty well. There are some other nice to have policies that need to be done, some instructional policies, you know, a missing person, how long do I have to get dental records? I don't know. Let me look that up in the policy manual. So we have some of those that need to be in place too. So that's an ongoing project. That's been going on since I, since before I was appointed chief. So it's an ongoing project. We started to pay a lot more attention to our response times. That's a kind of a universal benchmark for police agencies. And we want to, we've spent the last year tracking that to make that a benchmark. And then we're going to try to reduce those in the coming years. And whether that be the way we respond to calls, how they're assigned at the dispatch level, personnel needs, things like that. So we intend to really track that a lot in the upcoming year. We talked about legislative changes. There are some severe impacts there to the way we do business. Not a lot of those are financial. Some of them are, for instance, mental health cases. We're spending four and five times the amount of time on mental health cases than, than we used to. Both because we're getting more of them, but because the way we have to now handle them, right? Involuntary commits are very, very hard to do. We can't, we physically can't even help put somebody onto a gurney to take them to the hospital. So those calls are taking a lot more time.
Oh, does, does Pierce County Fire have a mental health care worker?
They do not. We have available to us at times what's called a co-responder.
Okay.
And those are grant-funded positions at the sheriff's department in Tacoma has some too. But those are made available to us through their grant. They're not always available. I'm not sure that they have twenty-four hour coverage yet. I think they have twenty-one hour coverage. Right? So these things can happen at any time. They don't really change the game much, other than they have some authorities that we don't have as far as saying, yes, I believe this person needs to be involuntarily committed. We can do that too at a certain level. But then the problem become we both get stopped at the same spot. We can't use any degree of force and force is undefined in law now. What it could physically mean us escorting somebody to a gurney. And even if they're passively reluctant to do that. So that, that's where we get stymied. Hopefully that'll get cleaned up in the next legislative session. That's one of the things that we're, we're looking. And moving on to page sixty-seven. Training, I've mentioned that budget number there thirteen-three is based on seven hundred dollars per officer per year. So we've kind of stayed in compliance with that. Covid has in a backwards way helped us out with that because there haven't been a lot of classes offered. So each officer is required to maintain twenty-four, a minimum of twenty-four training hours per year. We do most of that in-house through firearms and detective defensive tactics and our breathalyzer training and bloodborne pathogens and some things like that. Occasionally that we need to go to an outside vendor and the cost of those classes are creeping up.
Excuse me one moment, Tony. I don't think we're going to get to tourism today. And we've got, we've got a whole nother department after this, and that means we'll be here till six. So unless, unless council objects, I think, you know, if you look at our schedule, we've got after police, we have community development fifteen minutes and then tourism, we have forty minutes because we have the grants. So unless anyone objects, I think that needs to be pushed to tomorrow. Okay, so Dave, would you mind going upstairs and telling telling Laura that we're going to have her, if it works with her schedule, have her first tomorrow? Yeah. And then if it doesn't, we'll have her last, but see, we'll have her first. That sound good, Tony? Sorry about that.
Okay, moving on. Number, item number two would be to conduct a staffing study. That was at the mayor's suggestion. I'm supportive of that. I think that's a prospective way of looking at our department. What, what do we need or what can we anticipate in the next coming up, right? Two, five, whatever years. I participated in a meeting with planning recently, last week regarding annexation studies. And they, they kind of looked to me for what kind of police services that we might need. I think this sort of a study might help answer those questions as well. Okay, we always seek grants. We get quite a bit of grant funding on some certain things. Our partnership with Pierce County D E M, Department of Emergency Management, those costs went away. That was costing us about ten thousand dollars a year to help us stay in federal compliance so that if a big massive event happened here, we could get federal funds. They've decided to waive those fees for all the small jurisdictions. So that's a bonus for us.
Who fills out your grant applications?
Depends on the grant. If it's a traffic safety grant, it's either me or usually me and the lieutenant. If it's a piece of equipment, it's often me. Yeah, something like that. We fund our local radio station partly, giving them a three thousand dollar sponsorship. And then we contract for services on call services with the Pierce County Sheriff's Department. That's, those are kind of a buffet style where we can say we need SWAT. We need forensics and we need maybe major crimes detectives, right? And we pay a per capita rate for those certain categories.
Did they come out at all last year or this year yet?
Yeah, we've used forensic several times this year already. I'm sure we've used K nine a few times, a couple of times.
Okay, thanks.
SWAT is just the big insurance policy, right? Because if we paid on a per incident basis there.
Oh, yeah. No, I, 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 it's twenty-two thousand five hundred and sixty welts spent.
Of course, we contract out our dispatch services and we pay radio access fees. That's an area that's being scrutinized on whether the spirit of or the intent of proposition one that was voted on in two thousand and eleven, the one tenth of one ten, one tenth of one percent sales tax for a new radio system, whether, whether that was designed to fund the entire thing or whether these entities like the C C N, the combined communications network that we subscribe to can charge us a fee. There's lots of discussions going on about that right now. And then our tasers have all gone out of date. So we, we lease them instead of buy them. Tasers are extraordinarily expensive. They're very finicky as far as when they come out with a new version, it has to have a whole new holster and we have to use different cartridges for them and things like that. So Taster, Taser's got kind of a monopoly on that. Right now, there's no real good alternative, but it's such a good tool that it saves lives. We can't operate without it. So we have a five-year lease we've obligated to or will obligate to, I hope, for about ninety-nine hundred dollars each year.
Yeah, on number seven. How does Southside nine-one-one, how do they allocate costs? Is it?
Great question. I was involved in a subcommittee for them last year that took a look at that because it hadn't been updated in many years. And that balance, we got way out of balance. And so an agency like ours, our costs actually ended up going down. So it's eighty-five percent calls for service. And then we have a very strict definition of that and then fifteen percent population. And that seems to be the right metric. I think that works fairly across the board when we look at everything from and it worked for the fire side of the house. So like Greenwater Fire or Silicon Police, Newport Police to Tacoma Police. I think that distributes things pretty fairly there. And I think we, we got a deserved correction in that.
So it's a moving target on how many calls of service per year.
Correct. And population, right? So ours actually went down this year.
If you look at your ballot, I think they're, they're promoting a eight, eight-one-one for suicide, which is
That's a different tax that was implemented.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not a public safety thing. So. Okay. And then on our capital outlay on page sixty-nine, we have one patrol vehicle. We actually got thirteen years of service life out of. When we designed the take-home program in two thousand and seven, we thought we would get between five and seven years of each car. We're getting at least eight out of each car minimum. And up to thirteen is the highest we've seen. So that car is retired. We'd like to replace that with another truck. As you recall, years ago, we, two thousand and fourteen, we put a pickup truck in our fleet. That has been invaluable to us, transporting range supplies. And when we go to the range in the snow, it's been helpful and cars out and things like that, picking up large items that found property. So I think it would be nice to have at least one or two trucks on our fleet at all time. It toes our, toes our boat, toes our emergency trailer.
I think you can get an F one-fifty now that's hybrid or electric.
They have an all-electric one. It's quite expensive and the range is very low.
And you think
We're not there yet.
Okay.
But I like where you're going.
It is a Ford. Yes, I know.
So I was tempted to put the Tesla in, but I didn't think that would
Okay, yeah, that's probably not a good idea. What, what kind of range would you be looking for with the electric vehicle?
We'd have to study that a bit. But I, I know right now that that Ford that you're speaking of, I think, has a hundred and seventy mile range, which doesn't seem to be quite enough. I know that I've, back when I worked the street, I would put occasionally a hundred and fifty miles on a car in a night, you know, so.
Okay, thank you.
So it, you know, I remember we went to the take-home police cars and it was, they were going to take care of them better and all the rationale and what so, and this can be off, I can get, do you have some data on on the longevity of the vehicles? You just kind of casually mentioned that.
I can call that. Yeah, I can, I can pull that all together for you.
Okay, thanks.
But yeah, I, we're pleasantly surprised with it. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The in-car fingerprint scanners, these had before, this is kind of a pilot program that King County started, so we'd be able to dovetail on that. We did not purchase those in the existing budget, mostly due to Covid. We couldn't get to the training. We couldn't get to the right people because they were working remotely, things like that. But so I'd like to carry that over. This is a, a device that if somebody doesn't have ID and we think they're lying about their name, we can just have them put their thumb on the reader. And within minutes, it will confirm or disprove their identity. And then something else I've carried over all the way from two thousand and nineteen is a, is another mobile radio for our emergency management trailer. So we're actually kind of doing the shell game with our radios right now. We have one that still has some service life in it. It keeps working. So we've kept that in one of our cars and take, and took a radio that was destined for that car and put it in our emergency man, management or emergency command trailer. And that seems to be working. So as long as it works, no need to spend the money, right? So I just like to roll that over into the next budget too. Computer equipment is not listed. I just spoke with the city administrator. That's apparently all captured in the IT budget.
That's captured where?
In the IT budget.
Okay. Yeah, in that sixty-six thousand that was in Keith's budget.
So let's see here. I think that's really all the nuts and bolts of it. It's not, not a lot of mystery. Councilmember Eversol.
I've got a couple of questions for you, Chief. Number one, what does it cost to bring on basic entry-level police officer to staff them and give them a car? What's the total cost on ballpark figure maybe?
Well, you said entry level. We, we don't, we haven't hired entry levels in many years.
Okay, well.
The reason for that is that they, they don't really, they're not independent, working on the street for about thirteen months after the date of hire. Okay, so we've been trying to get to the magic twenty-one number for several years. Once we get there, we can take a look at entry levels. I've told you that the hiring environment in police work is beyond difficult right now. But entry levels could, could come into play. Now, if I can answer the question by telling you how much it costs to outfit a lateral police officer, right, we figure around five thousand dollars for uniforms, guns, tasers, everything that comes with what I'm wearing and, and their computers. Now, we have a lot of that equipped, of course, right? So when we hire Officer Twenty-One, we have a lot of that already available. We have guns, we have computers, we have a car. Right? So that number will go down. Yeah, five thousand at the, at the top end, we slim it down by already having things on.
Okay, so maybe I used the wrong word for lateral entry or whatever, but like we're hiring an officer. So what, what's it going to cost us to to hire that officer and to have just one person?
Our most recent, our hard costs with the most recent were, I'd have to total everything up, but if you pin me down right now, I'd say twenty-five hundred dollars.
That's all recruitment, everything?
Yeah, those, I'm thinking hard costs, the uniforms, equipment, things like that.
But I thought, but I thought when you get the car, the boat, the equipment, the uniform and all that, you're at about a one-twenty-five.
Right. If we're, if we're starting with a car, yeah, that's of course the biggest expense, right? Yeah.
Okay, so around a hundred and five thousand dollars per officer?
Yep. Assuming we don't have a car or any equipment, right?
Okay, second question. I, I noticed a lot of times that we'll see Gig Harbor PD coming out of our city to go and assist with Pierce County sheriffs and things like that. Do they reimburse us for any of those costs? Like, for instance, up at the fishbowl game the other day, there was a Gig Harbor police officer on duty.
Fishbowl is an off-duty thing. Yeah, and that's dictated by which team is the host team. But we daily help out Pierce County Sheriff's Department out here and they daily help us out too. If we started to get into the cost, you know, tracking mode, I'm not sure who's going to be the winner there. I guess it'd probably be a wash, but we have to have their assistance and they have.
I mean, I, of course, I'm not everywhere at all times, but I definitely see more police officers responding to Pierce County stuff than I do see Pierce County Sheriff responding to Gig Harbor.
We don't stray far. You know, we're not going to be going, unless it's something very violent, we're not going to go across the pretty bridge, for instance. We're not going to go to Fox Island, something like that. But we'll go redrive, we'll watch it drive, things like that to help out if it's a, if it's an officer safety sort of a call.
Thank you.
One thing I might mention on them, you know, we talked briefly with court about the court security. And there's, you know, two to three options. And so we're going to discuss that on the study session on October twenty-eighth, which would be great to have you there too, to have your input. And that starts at one. So we'll coordinate that time. But your information would be valuable on that.
And that's exactly what's going to be my question. Do you have any? Because do you have any?
Right. So yeah, the three options is, is, I think we whittled it down to would be outside contracting, hiring off-duty officers, which I think is the worst option. And trying to find a And trying to find a hybrid, I call our existing C S O a unicorn, right? Because he happened to come with a reserve commission. He was a reserve police officer for us at the time we hired him. So he had that authority to carry a gun and make arrests. Those people aren't floating around out there very often. And so trying to find that exact replacement might be tough. Most agencies, like ours, we don't use reserve officers anymore. There's this liability, we can't accommodate the training or equipment. So finding that might be tough, not impossible, but that would be the best case scenario if we could find that individual. And then I think you have to look at contracting.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. For keeping us safe. And crime at bay.
Mayor, we have the Arts Commission Chair waiting on the line to do her presentation. Do you want to scut with that for tomorrow too?
No, because we're not gonna, I don't know how we'll get the arts. They can come in after community development. Because I, I don't think we can push something else till tomorrow, we're, we're going to get after the time.
Okay, she's waiting on Zoom, so I'll see if she can stay on longer.
Okay. I didn't, oh, there it is, yep. Okay, so yeah, so she knew it was last anyway, so she should be able to be okay. We won't give Paul too much of a hard time, so he'll be okay.
Nobody wants that job, what is that?
We're listening in the other room.
Ah, there we go, sorry. I'm Paul Rice, I'm the Building Official and Fire Marshal for the city. Katrina Knutson, our Community Development Director, had asked me to fill in as well as Carl DeCemus. I'll be dealing with the building and fire safety portion of the budget, and Carl will be here shortly to deal with the planning portion of our budget. Building and Fire starts on page eighty. Wondered, description of function, by far, the largest portion of what our division does is item number three. Review permitting inspections, approval of permits. Just sort of a quick overview, this year so far, we've processed one thousand three hundred and seventy-eight permit applications. Up seventy-three percent over the past two years. And seventy-three percent, yeah, it's just been a banner, banner year. A lot of folks thought, well, maybe because of twenty twenty, you know, COVID went way down, but it really didn't. We, so we went back to twenty nineteen, and it was pretty consistent, the numbers twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Our permits inspections were at five thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine. We're up over two thousand inspections this year over the past two years. Kind of looking, everybody kind of looks at housing in our area, is real concerned about that. This year so far, two hundred and fifty-nine permit applications for homes. Last year, we were at one seventy-eight, and in two thousand and nineteen, we were just ninety-three. Onto, we'll just quickly touch on, onto the narrative. Our narrative of goals ties directly into our narrative of objectives. On the next page, on page eighty-two, the primary focal points of the objectives over this coming year, items four, five, and six. Items four is our permit portal and dashboard. Our division manages all the permit intake, manages the permit portal, basically provides the training and education for the rest of the staff regarding our portal. And currently, what we'll be doing this next year is carrying on a program where our permit coordinator meets with various technicians throughout each division on a regular basis so that we have consistency across all the divisions as far as how we intake, how we export, how we calculate fees, all those type of things. It's really important to have consistency. We found people get really, you know, they didn't do it this way, or I did it this way, that department's doing it wrong, and it's, it's, it's been an issue in the past. So we're really trying to focus on that this next year. Item number five, our electronic planner view program, the building vision manages that. We've been doing, or you may not, you may be aware or may not know that for the last nine years, the building division has been providing electronic planner view. In two thousand and nineteen, we were able to bring both planning and engineering onto the, onboard onto that program. It was, so now we have electronic plan view across all divisions of community development, and it was a really timely move. As you can imagine, with the pandemic, we wouldn't, we would have had to shut down pretty much our entire department if we couldn't have brought those, those other divisions onboard. We provide training, we provide ongoing updates as a part of that within the, the building division. There is one thing, a couple of things. Item number six, for the next year, one of the items we'll be working on with the council is the update of our names list for the historic naming area, as well as making any desired changes to our addressing ordinance. Our proposed budget is pretty much status quo with the exception of new inspection vehicle. But Katrina wanted to bring to you a couple of items, kind of bring to your attention that are kind of upcoming, that aren't included in this budget, but mainly because of timing and a couple of other issues. But she intends on bringing them forth as amendments this next year.
Pardon me, I, I couldn't quite catch that.
There's a couple of items that.
You know, I got that part, but when you were telling what they were.
They are, the, the first one that, that she wanted to bring to your attention was a reclassification of the current community development clerk to an administrative assistant. And that's based on the department's need and the work being done by that employee. She said that the current status of the employees' union representation has made it difficult to include in this current proposal for this year's budget. Apparently, their current rep is moving on to another position, so communication has really been a real issue, being able to work out the approval and buy-in and whatnot of the union. And the second item that she'll be proposing is a comprehensive fee study by a professional consultant for all of community development fees, engineering, planning, as well as building. She anticipates this to be approximately thirty-five thousand dollars, and said that a number of council members had believed this to be needed and long overdue. So currently, that's all that I have, but would be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So those items are not in the twenty twenty.
Those last two are not, but she said, she asked if we would bring those to your attention so you wouldn't, you know, be blindsided for next, this next year.
Okay, so she is planning on bringing them in addition, is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Thank you.
Paul, is there a, I'm sorry. Paul, is there a financial impact to the reclassification that Chief plans to bring to us?
Uh, yes. Okay, yeah, it looks like a five thousand dollar annual increase.
So real quick, what were those two items that aren't in there?
The reclassification of the community development clerk to an administrative assistant, and then a fee study, community development fee study to be done by a professional consultant.
So what was the reason to reclassify?
Basically, the work that's being done is beyond what that person is currently doing. And it, it more is in line with the, with the administrative assistant's job classification and the department's need for that, that level of work.
You know, she's gone over that with the city administrator?
I believe she said that she had.
She'd mentioned it to me, yes. Okay.
So, Paul?
Yes, sir.
Several years ago, when we were negotiating with the Fire Department on inspections, one of the plans that came out of those discussions was to try and bring that in-house. Could you just give me, I mean, is that off the table? Is it being talked about at all, or?
It's not currently being talked about. As far as feasibility at that time, I believe that was, but we didn't have the, the employees to be able, that were, to meet the criteria to be able to do that. We didn't have the staffing levels. We currently don't have the staffing levels to do that amount, that work. And we've been, we've been short-staffed for about the last eighteen months in our division.
I might mention, it, it took a year to get that contract figured out with the Fire Department. Well, it was, it was a lot of work and so, and a lot of study, a lot of time. And I actually think we, I think we came out with a pretty good, for the, for the present, I think you came out with a pretty good plan.
I think so too. The mayor worked on it really hard, and we did, we did a cost comparison, and it, it, it was kind of, it turned out pretty much even both ways. And then we, but we didn't have the staffing to be able to fill out positions.
And you are up to full staff now?
No, no, we're, we're currently have a job posted. We've been interviewing, we offered an individual a job like a month ago, and then two days after we offered the position, they, their plans changed. They're moving to Idaho, apparently everyone else. But we have, so we've, we reposted and we interviewed about two weeks ago. And I believe Camille is going to be offering one of the individuals, making an offer as soon as she gets back from her conference. So hopefully today, tomorrow.
And again, as she was doing that this afternoon. Okay, as Councilmember Markley said, it's, it starts with H R to be able to fill positions. If you don't have H R, then you don't fill positions, or you contract out someone to do it all. And stuff, so we're trying, we're trying, just like the person that left, we interview people and then they find a job right away. After so much time, you start over again. But like, it seems, it looks like they're being processed right now.
Yeah, the conversation earlier about succession, in, in my division, we've always, I mean, I always try to train all my staff to take over my job. You know, if I'm not here, try to train them up. Unfortunately, they, when they do get trained up, they've recently gone on to other bigger, better things. My, my, my previous assistant is now the Building Official for Kitsap County. And it's challenging filling, filling jobs right now. Staffing is, is tough all around, so.
I was joking earlier, but it's true. Our vending machine is probably going to go away or never going to be filled again because the company that's a hundred years old can't get anyone to staff, and they're going out of business. And they already let us know that they're going out of business after a hundred years because they couldn't get anyone to take the jobs. So they're pulling all their machines out of there.
And the last, the last two hires that have been in my department, we had to pull them up from California. And, and they're great inspectors, they're good guys. And, and it was a little bit easier for them to take the, you know, it was a little bit of a pay cut, but since they don't have that ten percent state tax, you know, and then they were able to make the move. But it is, it's, it's a real challenge in our area. There's at least twenty job openings on the Washington Association of Building Officials website for inspectors and, and planners right now. So it's challenging.
Yeah, Paul, I got one last question on the street names thing. There's a great debate within our community about whether we want to change Harborview Drive with Aberold's Way. My question is, is does Aberold need to be all capitalized, or just the beauty of the moment of poetry? Is that going to translate?
Well, as one past councilperson said, he wanted someone to be dead before they named something after. We don't want that, Aberold, we want you very much alive. Any other final questions for Paul? Okay, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, good evening, Council, can you hear me okay? I'll lean into this thing. So, and I don't know if I have the right page numbers here, but I'm starting on the document that I have, the digital copy I have would be page eighty-one.
Yeah, that's, we have building and fire safety.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Page seventy-two?
Seventy-two?
That's the one I saw on the website.
Yep, planning division, description of function?
Yeah, description of function is where I'm starting. So it sounds like that's, is that seventy-two, page seventy-two? Okay, I apologize. I have an, maybe an older copy, I'm not sure. But our description of function is, you know, relatively the same. I don't think there's a lot, a lot changed here. I don't think there's really anything to, to key in on as far as that goes. But in, in our narrative of goals, I think there's probably a little bit more to talk about, and particularly with item number eight in code enforcement. And I know that's been brought up a few times tonight, but that's one of the, sorry, that's one of the major, is that better? That's one of the major proposals for this coming year is making our code enforcement function whole, so we have one full-time employee in that position. And so that's where we're really hoping that we go, so that would be an additional point six for that F T E. Right now, it's point four, so as you know, we have, we have Adam in that capacity two days a week. And so this proposal would, would give us that full-time code enforcement five days a week, which is really sorely needed the way, the way things are going. So we just can't, can't keep up the way it is.
Carl, right now, our, I think our process is complaint-based enforcement?
That's correct.
So if we have a full-time person, will it be other than that?
Likely not, we would probably still be complaint-based, and that's, that's fairly typical for most jurisdictions. There would still, we would have the ability to do some things more proactively though. You know, consider signs, for instance. If we had somebody in the field doing this, doing this work full-time, then sign sweeps could be taken care of far more often. I know when I was a code enforcement officer in a previous position, that was one of my major functions. You know, just whenever I was out and about, I would just check, you know, I would just kind of divide the city up and, and hit it here and there just to kind of keep up with those signs. Because as you know, they're like weeds, you know, they just continue, there's, there's no, no way to, there's no way to get ahead. So that would be a huge boon for us. But, but to answer your question, I believe that it would still be complaint-based.
Do you ever stop in when you see a house being remodeled to see if they're permitted?
That's, it's something that could be done for sure. I mean, if, if we, if we knew for a fact that, that there were no, no permits on that site, but I would say in my experience, I didn't do that unless I saw something that looked completely out of, you know, out of line. Or oftentimes, what we can do is just check the system. You know, we could look in and see if there's a permit in the system if we have any question about it, or talk to one of the building inspectors, find out if they know anything about that particular house, so you know, and if we hadn't heard that there was anything going on there.
So that's another complaint-based thing.
I, I would say mostly, unless we saw something completely egregious. You know, you, you know, you, you don't want to ignore or you want to be really proactive on our, our life safety issues. You know, we don't, we don't want to turn, turn a blind eye to that by any means. So life safety is, is a key component in code enforcement. Oh, maybe you didn't. Yeah, you have something to add?
Yeah, no, we, we absolutely are very proactive when it comes to construction projects. If we are driving by and we see something going on, we see someone building a deck or remodeling their home, the dumpster out front, we'll check our tracking system to make sure if they do or don't have a permit. If they don't, we absolutely will knock on the door and chat with them. Some people think that they don't need a permit for certain issues, certain things, but so then it becomes an educational opportunity. But we, the building division, our inspectors have been given direction to absolutely reach out when we see those, those issues. And mainly because, before it gets going too far, you know, someone goes in, they start tearing things out, remodeling things, they may not be able to. I mean, our zoning code, we've got areas of town where you can't, you know, you have to go through a conditional use permit for certain uses. You have all kinds of different regulations and historic district standards need to be met. So we want to help, you know, deal with that sooner rather than later, so.
Good, thank you so much.
So you can check those if it's in a system mod in your in-car computer, right?
Absolutely, on our phone.
If the city has provided you and council.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
Oh, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Paul.
Any other questions about the code enforcement that I could answer? Or Paul could answer? Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Paul. Okay, all right. So I'm going to move in then to the narrative objectives. That's where we've got some, some of the more dollars and cents items. A lot of this is, a lot of this are, are, are things that you will have seen previously. But a couple of them you may not have. And one of those is the 2024 periodic comprehensive plan update. So we have to update our comprehensive plan in, by 2024, by June of 2024. So this would be the first foray into that process and really kind of laying the groundwork. And that obviously then would continue into 2023. So this would kind of just be the first phase of that, of that comprehensive plan update for 2024. The, the next item number six is a carryover from 2021. So we just, we didn't have the capacity to conduct that housing attainability analysis or the housing needs assessment that, that we really need to get, we really need to get done. And I believe this might have been a carryover even last year. So I think it's been kind of carried over a couple of years now. So it'd be really great if we could get to that, I think, this year. And then on number ten, the design manual review, this is something that's been, I know, kicked around for a while since, since I've gotten to the city. And I think it's really important that we, that maybe we focus in on that this year. So we're, we're asking to, to take a really holistic look at the design manual this year and see what, you know, what we could do to improve upon it. And, and maybe craft it to, to work better for the whole city rather than just certain parts of the city, I think is, is really the goal there. And then under number eleven, we have a development, we're like, regulation update. So this would be part of the 2022 long-range planning work plan. And with this, we're focused on trees this next year. And you'll note that we're also bringing in third-party review arborists. So, you know, we've been, we've, we've been listening and I know council's been listening and, you know, trees are, they're always just like signs, you know, they're kind of in the same, they never really go away. We always have to find a way to, to deal with them. So this would give us a good look at, you know, how, how and what we do with fees, potential penalties. Are there more creative and better ways to preserve them through, you know, during development? And are there ways that, you know, we can put them back that work better for the development, you know, between the built environment and the natural environment? That's, that's really the goal there. So. And I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So the number ten?
Yes.
What is that fifty, is that, you plan on hiring a consultant for that? Or why, is there $50,000 associated with that?
I believe that would be consultant work. Yeah, we would bring a consultant on to help us with that overhaul.
Well, I'll, I'll talk to you after the meeting about this.
Okay.
I, I do know that we, we don't have extra staff to do all the, all the, I mean, what, what's our, what's our permitting? How many, what percent, thirty-three percent up from last year or, or something?
Yeah, I think, building permits alone, I mean, that's not, that's not land use.
My point with this is, I participated in the, the original design review manual creation. And then when we updated when Steve Osgathorpe was here, and yeah, it was, it was, it was, it was the most time-consuming thing that I've ever done for the city is reviewing that design manual. But my fear with the, you bring in an outside consultant, that was done by community members that were familiar with the history of Gig Harbor and had a lot of expertise in a lot of different areas. And you bring in a consultant from the outside and that's, doesn't have the historical knowledge of Gig Harbor, that could be problematic potentially.
Well, maybe, you know, when we discuss it further, maybe what you can do if, if the majority council thinks about it, through, through the, through 2022, maybe, maybe you contract out something else that's not as sensitive. You still leave in the budget, but maybe you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I just, I just wanted, I was just, yeah, I'm not making a, say to pull it out. I'm just stating.
There are other ways of doing it in-house. If you find a consultant to do something else, it's not as passionate.
Sure. As, as part of that process though, I would say we would, we would definitely bring together a robust steering committee. I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't just hand it over to a consultant to do the work. I mean, there would be, there would be community outreach. We'd bring together a steering committee, local experts and community members, you know, to be a part of that team. So we would just have, you know, a consultant on board to help drive the project for us and kind of keep it, keep it going. So that, that would be the, be how it would operate ideally.
Other questions from council? Great, thank you. Thank you, but thank you both very much. All right, Josh, do we still have probably Charlie Glock? Is that who's presenting it or?
Yes. Sorry, yes, Charlie is still on. Let me promote her so she has the ability to talk. And then I will just quickly run through it and then Charlie can add what she wants to add.
Okay, so I can find it, but what page, what page are we working on?
We are on, I believe it's going to be probably somewhere around ninety-three. I'm working with the online version, which has different paginations, so.
Yep, I got ninety-four.
Ninety-four.
Is probably where it starts. So yeah, description of function.
Okay, yeah, so I think we're probably all familiar with the Arts Commission's functions. So I will skip over that and go to the narrative of goals. We worked with the Arts Commission this past couple of months to kind of streamline this a little bit and kind of reset from the past years. Of course, the one thing we want to keep is the creative endeavor support. To that end, I think they've asked for an additional thirty-five thousand for that, or additional five, five thousand to get it to thirty thousand. Sorry.
So wait, did you just jump to narrative?
Uh, yeah, go to the narratives of objectives on that.
Okay, ninety-six.
Yeah, that, that's more, more of a summary of what they're asking for. So last year that was twenty-five thousand. This year they've asked up that to thirty thousand. They had quite a bit of demand. I think there was probably fifty-five or sixty thousand worth in applications that they had to consider. So that's a very popular program. Workshops and presentations, we've kind of streamlined this a little bit. They, in non-COVID times, like to have workshops that teach people how to apply for their grants and what kind of opportunities are out there. So this five hundred dollars is just an amount to help them facilitate their meetings with refreshments or facility use fees or whatever they might need. And then the third one that they do annually is the Harbor Arbor Art Project. And that's where they look for tree snags in city parks and they contract with local carvers to, to carve artwork in that. And we're about ready to sign a contract with an artist to do one in Grandview Forest before the end of the year. So that's, that's underway for this year.
They also already know that before we start cutting any trees at the sports complex, to be aware to cut some halfway so they could do some snags up there as well. Because they actually still buy in places. So that would be something down the road.
And then I'm not sure on the page. I'm sorry about this, but further down in the Public Works capital project section, there's a, there's a single page for public art projects in our capital, capital projects. That has been narrowed down to one project and that's just the Harbor View Stints and Roundabout. The Arts Commission, and this was in last year's budget, has asked to move forward with, with arts project related to the sidewalk on that.
That's on page one forty-seven.
One forty-seven, thanks, Tony.
One forty-seven?
Yes.
And that one is that the Arts Commission has a fund that accumulates from year to year with their unspent money. And that accumulation is towards their capital art projects. And so the proposal here, I believe, is that this is partially funded from that fund, I think twenty-five thousand, but there will be an additional amount from the actual project fund. So the total amount will be something larger than that. And then if there's any questions, I can answer them and then we can let Charlie address that too.
Also, we have to, so councils, you know, if they have questions for Charlie, there's one forty-six, which is upcoming potential public art capital projects, just so you're aware of.
Yeah, those are projects that we've had funded in the budget in past years. We've just moved them to the narrative of goals because they're really not projects that we have any potential to take on in 2022. So we wanted to keep track of them, but, but there's no, no real opportunity to, to move on with those next year.
So there's, so if you have any questions for her on page ninety-five, which is the narrative of goals, just so you get a complete bird's eye view.
So the, the community, I think, is really quite enamored with the creative endeavors projects and, and that's a wonderful thing for our community. It also brings tourists into town, maybe not during COVID. And it's too bad because they just had a writer's thing recently. And they've had poetry, which I've gone to, and people come into town, it gets publicized. And someday when we don't have COVID, maybe we'll get more people in town participating in these. But it's a, it's a really good way to, to also help get, get cover on the map. So it's a wonderful thing, these creative endeavor grants.
I don't see any more questions. So Charlie, I think you're on if you want to say a few words.
Thank you. Is my mic working? I, I can't see anything that says that it's working.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Josh. You did a wonderful job. And thank you, council members, for being so patient and letting us continue, just get our nickels worth in today. Jenny, thank you for your support of our creative endeavor grants. They really are a very popular program and they're something that I think is helping put Gig Harbor on the arts and culture map. We've had really, really good response. This is the, I think this is our second year, maybe our third year. Time flies whether you're having fun or not with the grants. This year we were, we were able to fund hands-on art, which is a local program that our mayor is very familiar with. It's a program that works with school, the, the elementary schools to bring actual hands-on art projects, art-making projects into every elementary school and middle school classroom. And the program trains docents, helpers that are volunteers to actually do the projects so that the, the teacher can be involved if the teacher wants to be, but they're not responsible for teaching this art project. Community volunteers are the actual teachers. The results are, are just wonderful. And there's an art history and culture lesson included with every one of those little projects. We were also able to fund the Gig Harbor High School Band Boosters to help them present their final concert. Pretty much their whole season was canceled again this year because of COVID. But we were able to help them put on a final performance that was available to the public earlier this year. It was before the last school year ended. We also helped fund Make Music Day, which was a day filled with music that took place at Uptown Gig Harbor. And that was produced by the Gig Harbor United by Music North America Group. Jenny also, also already mentioned the poetry series. We've already had two of the three live poetry readings. The third one will be this Saturday, three o'clock at the History Museum. And they're local Puget Sound area poets. They've been, I think, well-attended. They're being very nicely run this year. They're a project of the Gig Harbor Poetry Collective, which is a group of poetry lovers that just wanted people in our town to have an opportunity to experience poetry being read by the poets themselves, get to know the poets, ask questions and so forth. And on the fourth of November, I think, whatever that first Saturday in November is, there's going to be a free workshop, poetry writing workshop for anyone who wants to attend and learn about how to write a poem, kind of small group discussions to write poems. And that is also getting, there's limited reservations for that, of course. That's going to be held at Ocean Five, again, part of this poetry reading proj, project. There's also a wonderful, wonderful poetry walk that's going on in Twalcut Estuary, along the, the creek, the Donkey Creek that runs in back of the museum and then under the bridge and over into Donkey Creek Park. And that's a series of ten poems that have been written by local poets, local meaning Gig Harbor mostly and a few from Tacoma, that are, have been imprinted on small metal plaques. And the story, the poems, the theme of this poetry walk is the importance of salmon to the native culture of Gig Harbor and also to our local fishing culture, commercial fishing culture. If you haven't done it, I really encourage you to do it. The poems are beautiful. They're very well presented. And another example of how our creative endeavor grants are being put to work to really be a glue for people of our community to have inspiring, creative experiences. We've also been able to fund a display at the History Museum and some project at the boat shop. And Josh, you're right, there were close to fifty thousand dollars in grant requests this year. We don't have any idea how many grant requests we may be next, have next year, but we will very much appreciate having an additional little five thousand dollar pocket added to our budget for next year to make that happen. Harbor Arbor Art, I think many of you are familiar with that one. That's also been a very popular project. And we are very fortunate that for this next artwork that's going to be carved in an, actually in a fallen log in Grandview Forest Park, we're having Jeff Sandusky, who did that extraordinary carving in the city park on Crescent Creek, that wonderful old cedar tree that was carved into. Count and see how many you can actually see marine critters. He's going to be doing our last carving for this year. So we're hoping that that can be continued for next year. And thank you very much, Mayor Kuhn, for just reminding everyone that we want to be part of the sports complex when, when the plan is made for those trees to be cut, that we really want some of the snags to be left so that we can incorporate art into them as well. So any questions on any of that? And I'm, I'm here to answer.
I think you did a great job covering it. They, they all look like you've satisfied all any question we may have.
Well, I just have a one.
Yes.
So Charlie, I'm sure you're aware of the great debate that's taking place within our town about replacement of my statue.
You know, Spencer, that's on our wish list, okay? And, and, and is Aberold all capitals or is it, is it upper and lowercase?
Exactly. This is the question that has to be asked.
Can you, can you give us a doodle?
I got it right here. Set dimensions and everything. We look at George Washington busts.
Spencer, you know what happens with statues when the, when the pigeons come to town.
We love our pigeons. So thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Oh, thank you all. Thank you so much. And thank you for your support. Thank you for this, your support of arts and culture in our town. It means a lot to us and our citizens.
Thank you. And thank you for your patience for this tonight. Thank you. Okay, so, so yeah, so we'll have, was that okay with Laura to do the beginning? Okay, so we've got, okay, so we'll, we'll have her at two o'clock. I think we'll get through it and Public Works and everything on time. I don't think we'll get out. Yeah, we'll try to make it so we get out at five. So any last burning questions? I saw that we have, you know, the twenty-eighth is pretty quick to talk about the, the officer out there. So Tony, if you would get on that with, I don't think we, I think we, I'm sure the union will weigh in, but I, we're not taking anything away. If, if we did contract, which might be the way to go, and we put a code enforcement full-time, they haven't lost anything. So let's see, we probably won't have enough to, to do that on that, but let's, we'll start it out that way.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, council. Appreciate it and have everyone have a good night.
Move to adjourn?
We don't have to. It's a study session.
All right.
Thank you.